Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, July 10, 2025 work session. The first item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Sinead, do we have residents who would like to speak to us today?
Yes, we just have one resident, and she knows the three-minute rule, so it is Laura Anderson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Laura Anderson, 1425 West Pioneer, number Suite 114. Aren't we all interested in combating the devastating effects of homelessness in our city? If you are, here's where you start. I've sent you an email and attached a link to a website that offers homelessness response systems mapping workshops. These workshops have been very successful at not only identifying the problems, but also having all the participants coordinate to come up with tangible solutions. I would ask that this be headed up by citizens of Irving, including the Housing and Human Services Board, and not be staff-driven. It is imperative that the person responsible for the growth and development of downtown Irving should not also be in charge of providing solutions to the homelessness problem. We don't need to balance the needs of the businesses in downtown with the solutions ending homelessness, because if we come up with ways to lessen the burden of homelessness in Irving, then downtown businesses will thrive. If you, in fact, choose to do this, it will need to be done pretty quickly for two reasons. First, you can determine the best use of the 2.9 million ARPA funds, and second, because the 2025-26 Action Plan that you are receiving today is seriously lacking on the opportunities to address homelessness. We've spent two years debating how to spend $2.9 million in ARPA funds, and we're no closer. Once this mapping is done, you can stop arguing about whether we need a non-congregate shelter for the homeless or an emergency shelter for domestic violence, because both domestic violence victims needing temporary emergency services and those who are considered traditionally homeless are reviewed in the mapping, so you will be able to determine if, in fact, we do need an emergency domestic violence shelter or not. On June 12, you authorized $191,000 to create a new vision for the Main Street called Downtown Irving Reimagined. You immediately approved the expenditure, and we had our first meeting on June 24, of which about 75 people showed up to listen to the new plan for downtown Irving. The very first question asked by my friend Kathleen Olson was, "What are we going to do about the homeless?" The city staff's reply was that we would be speaking to city council on Thursday, and it wasn't the focus, so we moved on. Gentlemen, the workshop costs $30,000. Couldn't we spend $30,000 more to answer the question, "What are we going to do about the homelessness in Irving?" Again, I'm ready to assist you in tackling this devastating problem. The economic cost of homelessness far outweigh the nominal cost of beginning to understand the totality of homelessness problem, so we will have the opportunity to fix it. Thank you, gentlemen.
The next item is the City Operations Update.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two, April. We have our last month on ICTN and then our Sparks and Stripes recap.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. April Riling, Director of Communications, pleased to present last month on ICTN for the month of June.
Your ICTN team produced 44 videos in the month of June.
I've been around Irving for a long time, but I thought I knew everything that was here. No, this is blowing my mind.
I still can't drive past that intersection where Texas Stadium was without a little bit of a heart tug. Irving certainly holds a special place for us.
The cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process, so not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away.
I've been celebrating June team since I've been a very young child, so now that the city does it, especially here in the open park, I have to bring my family and friends.
Just grab your phone and head to the App Store, Google Play, search IrvingTXGov, and download the app.
This is family-owned, there's lots of warmth, lots of compassion. This is not just any taco shop in Irving, it is the taco shop in Irving.
We work with victims of violent crime, domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and making sure that they have that continuum of care is very important.
I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
The kids always love science programs. We've got some young scientists here that come to Valley Ranch.
This is a massive effort. Removing 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street, starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving.
Thank you, and I'll invite my friends from Parks and Recreation to come on up if they'd like to co-present the Sparks and Stripes update. Scott Crossno. Mayor and Council, before I show you a quick video just of some highlights from July 3 and 4, I wanted to share some stats. The City of Irving Sparks and Stripes Celebration generated widespread media attention, reaching a combined audience of more than 280 million across TV, radio, online, and print, with an estimated publicity value exceeding $3.23 million. The total, we had 67 media mentions, with the majority of our audience reached online. However, all local broadcasters covered both of our events. We had 277 million online audience, 1.8 million TV audience, and 670,000 people via radio audience. The website stats for July 3 and 4, we had over 102,000 hits on the website, over 445,000 views, meaning they visited multiple pages while they were there, and the top countries that we got visitors from were USA, of course, we had 100,000 people, India with 530 people, Germany with 440 people, Canada 260 people, and Ireland 180 people. Just some unique fun facts there. On social media, July 3 and 4, across Facebook, Instagram, and X, we posted 16 different times, a combination of both photos and videos. Six of those were videos. Over 74,800 people engaged with our content, and 1.48 million people were reached via our content for July 3 and 4. The top-performing video was on July 3 during the Drone Show when we announced the Guinness World Records title, and that video reached 835,000 people, that one video alone, so some significant reach on social. As you know, we livestreamed the event on YouTube. We had 16,000, or currently, as of today, right now, we have 16,263 views on YouTube with over 2,000 hours watched. We had 207 people like our YouTube and a lot of really engaging comments on our YouTube stream. We did reach 65,000 impressions, so 65,000 people scrolling along YouTube saw our video. And some fun facts, we had 8,827 views on July 3 on YouTube, and our peak time was during the fireworks and drone show where we had 865 live viewers tuning in. 18.6% of our viewers were in Irving at the time that they were viewing, 5.7% were outside of the USA, and we did generate 103 new subscribers on July 3 and 35 more on July 4. So we are almost at 15,000 subscribers on our YouTube channels. We're within about 200 subscribers to reach that 15,000 mark. So some outstanding coverage, and a big shout-out to the communications team and Irving Community Television Network, who not only livestreamed the event, but they also programmed that wonderful video wall that you all saw. We had five cameras deployed out there and a team of about 20, so they put in a lot of really hard work. So thank you to the communications team. And with that, I'm going to show a quick video and then hand it over to Chris. Scott, sorry, I was looking at Chris.
We came last year. It was our first time because we had just moved to Irving, and we really enjoyed it, so we were pretty excited to bring my parents and my niece and the rest of the family.
My daughter's first parade, and so we're going to have fun getting candy and spending time with the community.
We come here every year, and it's really fun watching all the cars. It just brings us all together, and then we see what Irving is and their people.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, staff, Scott Crossno, Assistant Director of Parks. I wanted to give you a quick update on our Sparks and Stripes events for 2025. First, I want to thank April and the communications team for providing that great video for us. I think that was fantastic. Have to thank all the other departments who provided assistance for this great two-day event. We remember the days when we kind of had to shoulder everything ourselves in parks, and it's much nicer now that we have a lot of colleagues that are assisting. Spoke to several people that were out there from different departments, and not only was everybody doing great work, they had great attitudes and really represented the city very well, so appreciate all the help, everyone. And as you know, it was a two-day event. Thursday, July 3, all of our activities were at the Levy Event Center, and then our Levy Event Plaza, rather, sorry, excuse me. Friday, July 4, we had our parade and moved the events down to Heritage Park. At Levy Event Plaza, we had a great venue to kick off all our Independence Day holiday festivities. The biggest thing, and I think this played into things for the whole weekend, we had great weather, and yes, we're going to take credit for that, because, but it was unseasonably cool.[871.11]
Homelessness far outweigh the nominal cost of beginning to understand the totality of homelessness problem, so we will have the opportunity to fix it. Thank you, gentlemen.
The next item, next item is the city operations update.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two, April. We have our last month on ICTN and then our Sparks and Stripes recap.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. April Riling, Director of Communications, pleased to present last month on ICTN for the month of June.
Your ICTN team produced 44 videos in the month of June.
I've been around Irving for a long time, but I thought I knew everything that was here. No, this is blowing my mind.
I still can't drive past that intersection where Texas Stadium was without a little bit of a heart tug. Irving certainly holds a special place for us.
The cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process. So not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away.
I've been celebrating June team since I've been a very young child. So now that the city does it, especially here in the open park, I have to bring my family and friends.
Just grab your phone and head to the App Store, Google Play, search IrvingTXGov, and download the app.
It's family-owned, there's lots of warmth, lots of compassion. This is not just any taco shop in Irving, it is the taco shop in Irving.
We work with victims of violent crime, domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and making sure that they have that continuum of care is very important.
I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
The kids always love science programs. We've got some young scientists here that come to Valley Ranch.
This is a massive effort. We're moving 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street, starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving.
Thank you, and I'll invite my friends from Parks and Recreation to come on up if they'd like to co-present the Sparks and Stripes update. Scott Crossno. Mayor and Council, before I show you a quick video just of some highlights from July 3rd and 4th, I wanted to share some stats. The City of Irving Sparks and Stripes Celebration generated widespread media attention, reaching a combined audience of more than 280 million across TV, radio, online, and print, with an estimated publicity value exceeding $3.23 million. The total, we had 67 media mentions, with the majority of our audience reach online. However, all local broadcasters covered both of our events. We had 277 million online audience, 1.8 million TV audience, and 670,000 people via radio audience. The website stats for July 3rd and 4th, we had over 102,000 hits on the website, over 445,000 views, meaning they visited multiple pages while they were there. And the top countries that we got visitors from were USA, of course, we had 100,000 people, India with 530 people, Germany with 440 people, Canada 260 people, and Ireland 180 people. Just some unique fun facts there. On social media, July 3rd and 4th, across Facebook, Instagram, and X, we posted 16 different times, a combination of both photos and videos. Six of those were videos. Over 74,800 people engaged with our content, and 1.48 million people were reached via our content for July 3rd and 4th. The top-performing video was on July 3rd during the Drone Show when we announced the Guinness World Records title. And that video reached 835,000 people, that one video alone. So some significant reach on social. As you know, we livestreamed the event on YouTube. We had 16, or currently, as of today, right now, we have 16,263 views on YouTube with over 2,000 hours watched. We had 207 people like our YouTube and a lot of really engaging comments on our YouTube stream. We did reach 65,000 impressions, so 65,000 people scrolling along YouTube saw our video. And some fun facts, we had 8,827 views on July 3rd on YouTube, and our peak time was during the fireworks and drone show where we had 865 live viewers tuning in. 18.6% of our viewers were in Irving at the time that they were viewing. 5.7% were outside of the USA. And we did generate 103 new subscribers on July 3rd and 35 more on July 4th. So we are almost at 15,000 subscribers on our YouTube channels. We're within about 200 subscribers to reach that 15,000 mark. So some outstanding coverage and a big shout out to the communications team and Irving Community Television Network, who not only livestreamed the event, but they also programmed that wonderful video wall that you all sell. We had five cameras deployed out there and a team of about 20, so they put in a lot of really hard work. So thank you to the communications team. And with that, I'm going to show a quick video and then hand it over to Chris. Scott? Sorry, I was looking at Chris.
We came last year. It was our first time because we had just moved to Irving and we really enjoyed it. So we were pretty excited to bring my parents and my niece and the rest of the family.
time with the community.
We come here every year, and it's really fun watching all the cars. It just brings us all together, and then we see what Irving is and like their people.
I wanted to give you a quick update on our Sparks and Stripes events for 2025. First, I want to thank April and the communications team for providing that great video for us. I think that was fantastic. Have to thank all the other departments who provided assistance for this, these great two-day event. We remember the days when we kind of had to shoulder everything ourselves in parks, and it's much nicer now that we have a lot of colleagues that are assisting. Spoke to several people that were out there from different departments, and not only was everybody doing great work, they had great attitudes and really represented the city very well. So appreciate all the help, everyone. And as you know, it was a two-day event. Thursday, July 3rd, all of our activities were at the Levy Event Center and then our Levy Event Plaza, rather, sorry, excuse me. Friday, July 4th, we had our parade and moved the events down to Heritage Park. At Levy Event Plaza, we had a great venue to kick off all our Independence Day holiday festivities. The biggest thing, and I think this played into things for the whole weekend, we had great weather. And yes, we're going to take credit for that because, but it was unseasonably cool weather. I've been around a minute and I don't remember a Fourth of July like we just had, so very, very nice weather. We also had at 7 o'clock the T-28 Trojan flyover. I thought that was a great kickoff to the event, kind of got things going on a patriotic level. The concerts were fantastic. I think our headliner, Koff A. Anderson, he did a great job of blending his own music with covers and kept the energy level really high, so I thought that was fantastic. The Drone Show, I mean, I guess if we're going to do it, we might as well do it big. And we got our Guinness World Record certificate here. I think it was fantastic. Those guys, we've been working with Sky Elements really almost since their inception, so we've kind of been growing this Drone Show as they've been growing. That company is a local company, and we've been a big player for them. Actually, on the 4th, they had 26 shows that they did across the country, so they're getting big now. And each time they come to Irving, they do a great job for us. Our fireworks, of course, were fantastic. I think it's always impactful when we have the fireworks going off the barges over Lake Caroline and just a beautiful time that we had there. Just a photo collage here, you may see some faces you recognize from the night. I was being really annoying, going around and asking all of you for pictures, but it was a great night. I think the attendance, April talked a lot about a lot of the technical numbers. One of the guestimates that we have, and that's really all we can do with attendance, is that maybe there were between 10 and 15,000 people in Levy proper, behind it, up towards 114, probably another 10,000, and then around the promenade and in people's residence, it's really hard to tell exactly how many. So it's a, it's a guestimate, but I think we can safely say we entertained 25,000 to 30,000 people on the 3rd. So great job by everybody that was involved, and I think everybody had a great time. Our crowd was well behaved, too, and it may be related to the temperature because we really didn't have a lot of issues. It was, when you have that many people around, the restrooms are crowded, the lines for food were crowded, but people were getting along great. We didn't have a lot of issues, so that was great. Moving on to the 4th, we had our parade and the Heritage Park Celebration. Again, unseasonably cool temperatures. We had 52 parade entries, nice parade with versatile offerings. When we got to Heritage Park, the music and family activities, there were a lot of things for folks to do, bounce houses, face painting, all that type of stuff. We had the dunk tank. I understand the mayor dunked Joe, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Nice pitch, very good. And then the pie eating contest, you were involved in that as well. I love the fact that we've got a mayor that likes to get engaged, so. But it was a great day, over rather quickly, so that everybody could enjoy time with their families as well, but a great day down there at Heritage Park. And here's some photos from July 4th. Again, you might see some faces you recognize there, but it was a great time for all of us there on the 3rd and the 4th, and I appreciate everybody that was helpful during this. Let's go ahead and move on to questions. That's quite a shot right there. It's dark, which makes it look really nice, but you can see how many people are crammed into the Levy Plaza there. Take any questions you might have.
Questions? It was, you did a fantastic job, but it was interesting to visit with the people that were doing the Drone Shows, and they were very appreciative of how the City of Irving is always willing to work with them when they're trying new things out, and so, and we're always willing to be the test case to have something different than other people have. And we had a great, great crowd, the music was well, and the food was well. Really a subdued crowd. I was really surprised that we weren't going to have. We had great coverage by the police and Fire Department, emergency management, everybody was available, but everything went very smooth and it worked out well. We are all pretty much out of the park by noon on the next day, which gave everybody a chance to go home and spend some time with their family, so, you know, just a great job by all the staff.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, Mayor. Scott, thanks to you, Joe, and your entire team for putting on a great event. April, thank you for your team as well, going out there and helping to broadcast it and getting all the great social media views. Just on two Facebook posts alone, there was over 35 million views, particularly the Drone Show, just on two Facebook posts. So we know it hit out there, and I'm just going to say thank you to the entire team from public safety to the streets to traffic. We also had solid waste. Everybody was out there, the entire city team was out there, and it takes the entire team to get it done. Two things, one, I was going to have you go back, could you go back to the slideshow? I apologize, I just wanted to highlight two quick things. There's a story behind one of the pictures I think is also important to note. And while he's pulling that up, I talked to Joe specifically about the fireworks show, and I said, Joe, a little bit facetious, he said, Joe, at the grand finale, I want to feel concussions. In fact, I said, I want, I want car alarms going off. And I had a video sent to me from a friend of mine who was on the apartment, in the apartment complex across from the lake, and during the grand finale, and I'm going to try and play this while he's pulling that up. During the grand finale. And so I saw Joe the very next day, and I said, Joe, mission accomplished. Thank you. You see, Mayor and Council, a picture sort of on the bottom right there of a duck with some, some nice headphones there. There's a little bit of a story behind that. We had, there was a mother duck along Lake Carolyn who was nesting her babies, and it had been online, and there was hundreds and hundreds of people following Mama Duck, and we were concerned that Mama Duck was going to be disturbed during, with thousands and thousands of people coming along. So I called up Joe, said, Joe, could you please help out? And Scott, you and your crews went out there, they cordoned off the entire area, said nesting area, and we made sure Mama Duck, we didn't provide her the headphones, but we made sure Mama Duck was taken care of. And that's just, I appreciate the great effort, and it just really shows how connected and concerned and community-based we are. So I just want to say thank you to your crews for helping Mama Duck and enjoyed the show there. Thank you.
Team effort. Appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'd have been in the news if something would have happened to Mama Duck. Okay, we're going to go out of order here a little bit because we have some people with us on a couple of the items, so we're going to do the 360 update first, and then after that, we're going to go into executive session. So we'll move item number six up next and talk about Senate Bill 840.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jocelyn Murphy, Director of Planning. This is a tag-team effort. We have several different departments that have been working on this, so we'll kind of give an introduction and bring up a few different people to discuss a few different topics. Senate Bill 840, of course, was a bill that was passed by the state legislature this session. The governor did sign it and will be effective on September 1st. 840 requires that cities allow construction of multifamily and mixed-use development, residential mixed-use development in mixed-use districts in most of the non-residential districts. So those are the commercial districts where we would allow restaurants, retail, service, light industrial, those are areas where the multifamily mixed-use would be, would have to be allowed. The bill does not allow cities to require any type of discretionary approval, so that includes zonings or special exceptions, a conditional use permit, anything that would require an action from the governing body, the bill does not allow. It also preempts many of the typical zoning regulations, things like height and density and setbacks, things, the whole, any type of development would have to go through the building permit process, and all of the reviews would be considered at the building permit process and would either have to, would have to meet all the regulations of the city. There are also other preemptions for when a non-residential, like an office building, is converted to a residential multifamily building, and those mostly revolve around traffic and the inability to require a traffic study, additional parking, or any type of mitigation, be it construction or be it any type of fee. So we have spent a lot of time reviewing 840, what we can still regulate, what we can't regulate. So we have four different focuses that we want to present to you today. So the first one is to look at the zoning standards and development standards, and look at Chapter 3.13, which is our multifamily concept plan standards, and enhance the standards for multifamily and residential mixed-use, the ones that are not preempted. We have several building codes that we will present to you to, that will promote energy efficiency and sustainable construction. We are considering or proposing to amend the land development code to add an adequate public facilities ordinance requirement. That would need to be in the land development code and not in the subdivision ordinance, so that would apply to properties at the time of development and not just the time of plat. The purpose there is to make sure that any new development is able to provide the adequate or the minimum capacity, is what the bill says, of any of our utilities. And then finally, to look at those different infrastructure codes such as water and traffic, drainage, and see if there are any amendments that we may need to start to prepare and bring forward to you.
Jocelyn, if I can just interject here, we have, we have looked at this internally, I think come up with a lot of good solutions and creative ideas. We've also engaged Fries and Nichols to assist us with that evaluation. We have some representatives from Fries and Nichols here today, just to kind of listen in on this presentation, listen to what kind of feedback you have. But Fries and Nichols is an engineering firm, does work all over the country, really, certainly very involved in Texas, has a long history with Irving, has developed our water, wastewater, storm drainage master plans. They do land planning consulting all over the state, so they're very uniquely positioned to provide us some additional insight and suggestions that we may have missed or may not have thought about. This is a very accelerated process, they're in the early stages of their evaluation, they provided some initial feedback, but certainly a lot of that work is still yet to go. But wanted you to be aware that in addition to our internal expertise, we're looking at outside sources as well.
So first, some of the zoning or development standards and processes we've looked at is to revise the definitions. The Senate Bill 840 actually has definitions for mixed-use residential and heavy industrial. We already define multifamily today, so we'll kind of meld those different definitions together and make sure that we're consistent with Chapter 218. We also want to define mixed-use just in general, because we have had many mixed-use proposals over the years, and there's been some confusion actually to what mixed-use itself is with or without that residential component. We would also add mixed-use as an allowed use in non-residential use chart, so we acknowledge it as a use in the, in the core of our Unified Development Code. We think that we need to provide or create some type of application or declaration process, so at the time that an application for building permit is submitted, it is very clear, there's almost a checklist where the applicant understands the things that they are responsible for ensuring are completed, primarily focused on the studies, the infrastructure studies, that need to ensure whether there's adequate capacity for the development they're proposing. We also, something Fries and Nichols brought up, which is a great idea, is making sure the community engagement is very clear and activate our, or inform people around the development to know what is, what is happening and what is going to be built. If we don't have the zoning process where we normally would send notices out to 300 feet, we would notify our neighborhood associations and have our public hearing process with signs and the whole nine yards, we won't be able to do that anymore. But we can at least people, let, let people know there's going to be something built next to you. This is what's, what it's going to be, and this is why it's going to be there. And then finally, I'm working with Lauren on our consolidated fee schedule to provide some fees to make sure that the time that the staff is going to have to take, especially infrastructure, will be covered through the application process. So in the Section 3.13, which again is the multifamily concept plan standards, we will revise the applicability section to make sure that it is clear that it provides, it applies to all multifamily and mixed-use buildings. Right now, it is only multifamily, so that's been a struggle in the past, is we did not have any regulations for any type of mixed-use development. We'll reorganize the section. There's actually a section called Review Criteria that has some great just guidelines, just some thoughts about, you know, things that would make a better development. We can't require those, but we don't, I don't want to lose those. I think those are really great for them to think about when they're designing their, their development. The Section 3.13 also has concept plan standards, which are discretionary, so those are what we do today and have to bring those, often through city council, but definitely through P&amp;Z, that we can't use anymore. So I compared the concept plans to the detailed plans and made sure that the detailed plan standards that we will compare the building permit against are, they encompass everything we're looking for. So there's a little bit of duplicate in there now, but that way it is a very comprehensive checklist that we'll be going through at the time of building permit. And finally, just reviewing several of different standards to increase the quality of the resident living experiences, looking at parking, making sure that, you know, parking is covered, providing for not having compact spaces, well, I've got the next page, excuse me, to where we can make sure that people have trucks or larger vehicles they'll be able to fit. Let me start up top, though. So for minimum height, the city cannot regulate the height of the development. It's either the maximum of whatever that base district is, or 45 feet. So say we have an office district that's 30 feet or 35 feet, they could be up to 45 feet. But if we have another district that allows, say, 65 feet, then we have to allow the 65 feet. What we are thinking about, what we're proposing, is possibly doing a minimum height. We can't regulate maximum height, but setting a minimum height of 10 stories citywide unless it is within a 500-foot buffer of an R, single-family, a duplex, or a townhouse district, and again, that would be for new construction. There are pros and cons to that concept, but it is in order to protect the residential from some of the taller buildings. That is something that we want to, to talk through that with y'all today and get your direction on those ideas and how you would like for us to proceed with determining, you know, what we should propose in the ordinance for height. For open space, we currently have a requirement for 30% of the gross area and 25% of the net floor area for usable. So I'm looking into how to beef that up a little bit, change how the open space is calculated, increase or at least make sure that the program space, that's basically the constructed area for ball courts and playgrounds, is pretty solid. And also, Mayor's mentioned several times about making sure that they have a dog park, because that's something that's very common in apartments now, is to, for people to have dogs, and to make sure that those are clearly required separate from any type of human play area. Back to the parking, require 50% of the parking spaces to be covered, not allow any compact spaces, which we do allow in other areas, but if we're going to have one space per unit, we want to make sure those spaces are adequate, and then not allow any shared parking off-site. And then also for non-residential uses and mixed-use districts, think about whether we want to set a minimum non-residential, a minimum amount of commercial in those mixed-use And I will turn it over to Wayne.
While, while Wayne is making his way up, we really, this is kind of three separate areas of regulatory structure we're looking at. We're looking at the zoning and development requirements, which Jocelyn just covered. We're looking at building code standards, we're also looking at infrastructure requirements. So those are the three key areas. Mayor? Philip, maybe, should we ask questions of previous, and that way we, so we don't get lost in the shuffle? You had three or four things you wanted us to comment on. Al?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can we also consider adding EV parking as to what we may want to have in these new developments? It's part of the discussion we had this morning with the, with our fire chief. So just, this is a suggestion, okay? Thank you.
So any questions y'all had on what she had mentioned earlier about height or open space or any of that? She was wondering if we- She was wondering if we were okay with the 10-story minimum. Mark?
Yeah, I think, I think we like the 10-story minimum. I, I think that we talked yesterday a little bit about the buffer and not doing that buffer because, for different reasons, and, and I think you were looking for the, I think you raised the issue of like the percentage of commercial for mixed use. I think the statute allows 65% commercial.
Correct.
I mean, sorry.
Residential.
35% commercial. And what was, what was the other thing?
Well, the other, let's see, whoops. Yeah, those were the main things I needed your guidance from. These are the proposals that we would have. So, the others was just the parking, the different parking options that we were considering.
And there may be some others that, as we continue through this process, we identify, but right now, these are kind of the primary ones we're looking at.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I just wanted to make sure, as she finished up, that we answered a few of her questions. It looks like everybody's pretty much on board with what you're recommending, so we appreciate the opportunity. And as you say, Philip, as we go through the process, we may identify some other things.
Just, just to clarify, Councilman Croninwet had indicated that maybe not requiring a, or allowing a buffer where that 10-foot or 10-story minimum would be required. Is that, we can do that? That may be something to want to think about, but certainly, that's, that's doable.
I, I think that we, just my, my take on it, and I don't know how we, and there are things we've done in the past based upon height setbacks, so that, you know, from, from your residential, so, you know, if it's this high, you can be this close, but if it's this high, you gotta, I'm not explaining it properly.
No, I understand. The relationship, you know, height relationship or distance relationship.
To a single family.
We can, we can look at that and explore that concept as well.
I don't know.
Looking at my friends with Fries and Nichols, and they're nodding.
I, yeah, I, I don't think it's much of a challenge if it's next to commercial, but if it's next to a residential, I, we may want to have some type of it. And again, I'm not saying that's what we do, but I'd like to look at that and see how that would look. Is that okay, Mark, if we look at it?
Yeah, let, yeah, let's look at that, and then we can talk about, talk, talk to KO about what the statute allows at some point, and then figure that out.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Joshlyn, Philip, relative to the minimum 10-story height, has there been any discussions on how that would be defined specifically from a pedestal-type development versus a non-pedestal development?
It would be our intent to define that as 10 stories above a pedestal, so that this is, we're not counting pedestal parking into the height calculation. It would be 10 stories above. We would, we would be clear with that.
And could you please define the pedestal and what that is?
Pedestal would be, you know, a structured parking. Sometimes a multifamily concept will build a couple levels of structured parking and then put apartments on top and in front of that, that pedestal. So, that's what we're talking about pedestal-wise.
Thus, the 10 stories, it might be five stories of parking structure, and then maybe another five stories of actual apartment.
No, it would be 10 stories above the pedestal.
Yes, but what I'm saying, that's what a developer could come in to say, I would meet my
Right.
10-story if I just have five stories. And that's what we're not looking at. We're looking at the 10 stories above.
Correct. We would try to, yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, we can amend the definition of height to say it starts at the top of the podium.
Any other questions or comments, Joshlyn, before we move on? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Wayne Snell. I'm your Director of Inspections, and we're here to walk through some proposed new set of performance standards for multifamily and residential mixed-use construction within the city. These standards are designed to help our city grow responsibly, protect our infrastructure, and create healthier, more efficient places to live. So, multifamily and residential mixed-use developments can have a significant impact on city infrastructure, including our utilities, drainage, and transportation. These proposed standards aim to proactively address these impacts by promoting sustainable, high-performance building practices that benefit both residents and the city system. This ordinance would apply to all new multifamily and residential mixed-use developments, projects that convert existing buildings to residential use, and major reconstruction of existing multifamily or residential mixed-use buildings. However, it's important to note that staff's proposal includes a five-year exemption for projects that have already been approved and entitled by city council, such as those with an approved site plan zoning, multifamily concept plan, TOD concept plan, or a detailed plan, provided those entitlements were granted prior to the ordinance's effective date of August 30th. And routine maintenance, interior remodels, and minor repairs would not trigger these So, here's what we're focusing on. We're focusing on saving energy, creating healthier indoor environments, conserving water, improving roofing and stormwater performance, cutting down on the construction waste and pollution, and making it easier to get around and stay safe doing so. And each of this is supported by best practices and national code references with the goal of minimizing impact and maximizing livability. This section outlines how new development will have to reduce long-term energy use and utility costs. First, we're requiring at least a 10% improvement over the baseline energy code, which is a practical step that leads to meaningful energy savings. Second, building must be a net-zero ready, which means that they're built to be extremely efficient and set up to easily add those solar panels, our batteries, storage later, later on, if they choose. And even if those systems aren't installed right away, it's a way to prepare for clean energy without requiring the full investment upfront. Third, all HVAC systems, air conditioning and heating, systems and appliances must be all-electric, and this eliminates fossil fuels and supporting a shift to cleaner energy sources. And finally, those air conditioning and heating systems must, must meet a higher efficiency rating, and we're looking at requiring a SEER rating of 16 or above to reduce the energy use and lower operating costs for, for those residents. Next, indoor air quality really matters, and especially in apartments. So, we're requiring strong air filters, good ventilation systems, and building materials that give off fewer harmful chemicals. And we're also addressing noise. Walls and floors will need to be built to block most of the sound from neighbors, and things like voices, music, or footsteps don't become a daily nuisance. We're encouraging smart water use. That includes ultra-low-flow toilets, faucets, and showers to save water. We're also asking builders to include the setup for rainwater or grain, gray water reuse, even if the full systems aren't installed right away. And for landscaping, we're requiring smart irrigation systems that only water when needed, not on a timer. Rooftops. Rooftops can do more than just cover a building. We're proposing reflective roofing that helps reduce the amount of heat a building absorbs, and we're keeping units cooler and cutting air conditioning use. Roofs would also be required to include systems that hold and slowly reduce rainwater to prevent flooding and reduce the runoff. And we want to, we want them to be built to be hail-resistant, which protects both, both the building and the residents during those storms. Construction creates a lot of waste, and it can affect our air quality as well. We're requiring builders to recycle or reuse at least 75% of their construction waste. We're also asking them to follow a plan to manage dust, fumes, and indoor air quality during the construction, so when residents move in, the air inside is already safe and We're also looking, are planning for smarter transportation access. New developments must provide bike parking, and that would be at least one space for every five residential units, and this supports active transportation and helps reduce car traffic and parking demand. Next, we are requiring that 15% of the parking spaces be EV-ready. That means the electrical infrastructure will be in place to add EV chargers later. It's a cost-effective way to save, to support future electric vehicle use without requiring every charger to be installed upfront. And lastly, exterior lighting must follow the crime prevention through environmental design. This ensures lighting is uniform and strategically placed to improve visibility and help residents feel safe at night. Safety starts with smart design. We're asking for consistent lighting at all entrances and pathways, landscaping that doesn't block views, and clearly marked entries and clear boundaries between public and private areas. These simply, these simple but thoughtful changes help reduce crime and improve the feeling of safety across the entire property. We're also setting a high bar by aligning with LEED Platinum performance standards, but without mandating the formal certification. LEED, as many of us know, is a nationally-recognized green building program, and platinum is its highest level. It covers areas like energy use, indoor air quality, water efficiency, and responsible design. By holding projects to these same standards, even without the paperwork or cost of certification, we help ensure that buildings in Irving aren't just co-compliant, they're future-ready, resilient, sustainable, and built to a higher level of performance. This approach provides the full benefits of LEED, platinum-level outcomes, healthier buildings, lower environmental impact, and improved long-term resilience, while maintaining a more flexible and accessible process for builders. So, as we move forward, there are a few key dates to keep in mind for adopting these new standards. First, we need to post a public notice about this proposed changes on our city's website today. This gives us the required 21 days of public notice before city council can take action. Next, we need to hold a public hearing, which we plan on scheduling if we do proceed on Monday, July 14th. We're recommending the Construction Board of Appeals host that hearing, which is how we've handled similar hearings in the past. And then on July 31st, the city council would have the opportunity to vote on whether to adopt the new ordinance, and if it is adopted, those new standards would go into effect 30 days later on August 30th. So, in closing, these standards aren't just about rules, they're about outcomes. They help protect our city's infrastructure, reduce long-term costs, improve health and safety for our residents, and supports a greener future. And by adopting these performance standards, Irving shows that it's ready to grow with intention, care, and sustainability.
Before we move on.
Any questions?
Mayor, any follow-up questions on the building code proposals? Mark?
Yeah, I, I know there's, the greater concern is the mixed use and the, and multifamily. There's some concern, too, about tiny homes with the change to the lot size. I mean, for instance, if containers were put on properties, they would not have this energy efficiency, which, for all the policy reasons that you identified for multifamily, they also exist for the tiny homes, so is the, would the posting today be broad enough to cover that?
Well, the posting or the notice does not include that, so what I would say, Councilman Croninwet, is give us some time to work through that. We did have some internal discussions after you raised that issue, to kind of think through how that would really apply here. I think as we talked about previously, at least the information that staff has provided is that there are limited parcels today that are available for that use, but as you, we have to do some work. I think just the timeframe today to just apply these same standards to tiny homes would not be applicable. And then just to answer the question about the storage containers, when the state law changed and we could not regulate materials that did give the opening for other items such as storage containers to be used for construction, and Wayne may want to provide some more insight, but there's still requirements for when you're building, building a home in terms of minimum square footage and other requirements that are required in a home.
Thanks, KO. So, there are minimum requirements for rooms, especially for bedrooms and whatnot. Even if it were a container, Councilman, they will still need to meet the minimum standards that are in the current code, which do include efficiency ratings. It wouldn't apply in, in regards to this, because if they build it as a single-family home, they would still have to meet those minimum requirements for a single-family home. We did not adopt a tiny house appendix, and that appendix is just to allow for additional provisions that don't exist in the, in the code. So, hypothetically speaking, someone couldn't just build a tiny home as it is, and they would still have to meet stair requirements. If they build stairs, they still have to meet insulation requirements, et cetera. So, I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions before we move on to Joshlyn again?
Yeah, and Todd.
Oh.
So, this is kind, this is a transition over the infrastructure discussion. Perhaps one of the largest concerns with the requirement to accept multifamily and mixed-use development is the infrastructure. The, all of the water and the sewer and the traffic, everything has been planned, we just went through the impact fee process, has been planned on, has been based on the city's land use plan. So, all the capacities and down to specific areas and different drainage, you know, zones and things like that, have been planned for the uses that were expected. And so, we are proposing to create an adequate public facilities ordinance that would apply to all the different, all the types of developments. Data centers, of course, are a concern as well, and Todd will talk about that in a second. But we also want to make sure that it's clear of what the developers are responsible for. So, there's a whole list of developer responsibilities inside this adequate public facilities ordinance. It'll also clarify that they have to meet the minimum capacity, and if they can't meet that, they have to do studies. And if they can't meet the minimum capacity, then they will have to be very clear about what they will intend to do in order to meet those minimum capacities. And again, there are certain things that can't be required for building conversions, but we, we see that this is probably one of the most significant ramifications, but also one of the significant amendments that we're doing is in order to make sure that this process is clear. So, I'll turn it over to Todd, and Dan, and Trevor to go through all those different topics.
So, good afternoon, Todd Rec, what are you, utilities director? And I'm going to cover just a couple of slides. I think Joshlyn's already set it up really well. But we have a number of requirements we have to meet with the TCEQ, and the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 290, talks about our water system. And if you look at Chapter 217, that covers the wastewater system. So, you'll see here a number of things related to elevated storage, total system, storage, water supply, pressure is certainly a big one, and pumping capacity. And when you get to wastewater side, it's a whole lot simpler. It's just no unpermitted discharges, so making sure our system is big enough to accommodate any flows that we might add to it. So, the way we have planned for the current system is we have master plans for both the water system and the wastewater system. Those have been developed by Fries and Nichols through the years, very detailed, I'd say, complicated hydraulic models for both of those systems. The water system's going to have all the pumps and tanks and pipes and all that built into it, and the wastewater system's going to have all the pipes for that system. So, we, when we're building those models, we work with the planning department, so we pull together data on population, employment, land use, zoning, and look at not only what's needed today, but looking out 10, 20, 30, 40 years in the future, and, and making sure that we're planning and staying ahead of what, where we think the growth is going to occur and how we think the city's going to grow. So, this is a, just a simple graphic that shows how we progress through some of these evaluations. So, what we're proposing is if we have something that's different than what's in the current master plans, so we mentioned data centers, that's one that we're seeing a lot of now, and they certainly can use a lot more water than what we may have planned for. and they certainly can use a lot more water than what we may have planned for. But certainly, a multifamily moving into a commercial area could use a whole lot more water than what we planned for. But having that just trigger an automatic analysis with our consultant to plug those new demands, those new loads into the model, and, and see what we, see what we need to do to the system. So just some basic assumptions on how many gallons per capita per day, you know, for apartments, both on the water and wastewater side. There's different peaking factors, different considerations with pressure zones. So all that would be pulled into the model. We'd run the analysis, or our consultant would. Some of the things like storage, it's a simple desktop analysis, it's a calculation. But when you start looking at pressures and flows and things, it's, it's all connected and you have pumps running that you have to simulate. And so it gets a whole lot more complicated to determine, can the system that we have today and what we planned for, you know, actually accommodate, you know, whatever type of development we're talking about? And so you go through that process, and then you start looking at, sometimes you have to play games, put in larger pipes, different things in the system to come up with, you know, the infrastructure needed to be able to accommodate whatever development is we're talking about. Another thing that we'd want to consider is we have treatment agreements with Dallas and TRA, checking in, reviewing those agreements, checking in with those two entities, and making sure there's no impacts there. You're familiar with our agreement with Dallas. If we buy more water, it triggers a demand fee that we have to pay every year whether we use it or not, so that would certainly be a consideration. But anyway, compiling all that, the consultant would give us a technical memo summarizing their findings, making recommendations, and then those would be part of the discussions with the developers. So if we have to come in and add a pipe, add pumps, add storage capacity, some of what we're doing with our elevated tank now, you know, those would be considerations for the, the developer to, to pay for. There'd be an expectation that they would cover the cost for us to be able to expand our systems to meet that demand that we haven't planned on. So that's just a, a simple, quick overview. Certainly, when you start evaluating these things, there's a whole lot more to it than that, but just to give you a feel for, for how that would work. We do this sometimes now when we have changes on how things are going to be developed. You know, we have developers today that'll come in with something different than what we planned for, that we've had to do this. And typically, we'll refer them to our consultant for them to get with them Freezing Nichols, and then they would come back and make a recommendation. Sometimes it doesn't require anything. Our system is big enough and robust enough that we don't have to do anything. But anyway, we'd certainly want to go through this process, make sure we're meeting all the regulatory requirements, and we're not going to have impacts on other customers that are surrounding this area. So be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to Todd? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Are we going to goof up your traffic?
No, sir. That would never happen, Dan Vedral, Traffic and Transportation Director. There's a few things that we have going a little bit in our favor. One is, in Irving, the majority of your road system is already built out to capacity. Now, what that would mean is even if they did create a development which really significantly hits us, and the legislation says you can't have a traffic study, so, you know, don't look at the train coming at you, but it is what it is. The only way to upgrade that system is to buy right-of-way in property, and so it becomes economically unfeasible. I would say, like with Todd, in water and sewer, they utilize the city's master land plan. The thoroughfare plan is a sub-plan of the master plan, and we do roads, the bigger roads for the bigger areas in town with the higher intense use. We can go back to the 80s was the first plan, and it's been updated all the way up until just the last few years ago, so that's up to date. I would tell you, though, the things that kind of concern me is one space per unit. We don't have many parking problems in Irving, but if we did, we at least have the ability to control that. We can, and the, the legislation does not comment on, we don't have to allow parking adjacent to these developments. Now, if you're going to change a building out, whether it's industrial or office warehouse, if you're going to change that out to parking or to, to a multifamily, these are usually on larger roads anyway. But, you know, we're not, they'd still have to come in and permit if they wanted or request parking, and I don't see us offering up public right-of-way and public roads for a private business or a private residence there. It just wouldn't be a very good use. I'd also say that also invokes other questions. Would you allow tandem parking? Would you allow head-in parking off a major street? It becomes a safety issue at that point. So, you know, the, these are all things that would be outside of this process, they'd have to come through. Things that help us out in the traffic and transportation world is, we already have an access management manual, we have lighting plans, we have all this already addressed, where you can and cannot allow that. And that's been in place, the access management plan, plan has been in place for six years. It's established, it's been utilized here in the city for a long time. It was, took a number of years to get to that, so we already have exhibits, we already have what we will or will not accept as a city on that. They're all, also available online, so. The infinite wisdom in Austin is what it is, but parking will be the big issue. Other things that concern us is, when you put a residential land use from a transportation perspective, I'm sure there's no quality of life issues in and around that development. So how are kids, moms and dads? How are you going to walk? How are you going to get to the park? Is there a sidewalk system? Things like that. We can get, we can ask and get the developer to build a sidewalk system in front of their development, but then it goes nowhere. So it invokes a lot of other questions. It invokes, would you take a lane out on the road to make it a hike and bike lane? A capacity, well, now you're reducing capacity. So once again, that would have to come before this group, Planning and Zoning Commission and other committees for approval, and, you know, I don't know that staff would approve that. But right now, we're very car-centric as a society, I don't see that changing, so. But what I do know is we do have policies and procedures in place to at least give us a, a chance here to address a lot of these issues on driveway, driveway spacing, access gates and things like that, that can affect ingress and egress into and out of these facilities. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions to Dan? Dan, you're getting away free.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Trevor Crane, Director of CIP. So I'm going to talk a little bit about storm, storm drainings. So just to start off, our Drainers Department has been engaged with Freezing Nichols. We're in the final stages of wrapping up our stormwater master plan, and that's, the amendments that stormwater, or creation of that stormwater master plan led, is leading to some amendments in our design for stormwater anyway. So I say all that to say, a lot of the concerns that we have with 840 were already being addressed as a part of those revisions anyway. So a couple of the things that we were concerned about and that we would do to, to fix these or to address these things is defining what are, what constitutes adequate drainage infrastructure and establishing wind mitigation, whether that's onsite or drainage improvements is required. That was currently already going to be established in our, in our updates. Clarifying when a downstream assessment identifies a lack of capacity or adverse impacts. And then mitigation should be provided onsite with the developer having the option to install a storm drain, meeting the city's fully developed capacity standard. And then, as we've kind of talked about before, making sure that those studies are being, those studies are being triggered not by plating, but by any type of redevelopment or anything like that. That's, that's really the main, main thing that we're concerned about, is making sure that we get a chance to look at these plans for, whether it's a greenfield development or whether it's a redevelopment of an existing, existing building. And lastly, considering adding any low-impact design requirements, so landscape islands with parking lots and sidewalks for stormwater quality and slower runoff. But just to kind of wrap up, a lot of, a lot of the concerns that we, that we would have with 840, we're currently already going to be addressed as a part of our updates. So these are just a couple of things that we would want to make sure that we address moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So finally, we wanted to try to summarize, since we are in a very compressed time period, just to be very clear of what is going to happen and when. So on Monday, P&amp;Z will be getting the same presentation that you are getting today, and we will have a discussion with them. I always want to make sure P&amp;Z has a work session to see the amendments that are coming forward before they are being asked to make a recommendation. Wayne had talked about the public hearing for the building codes, the Construction Board of Appeals also on Monday, it'll be Monday afternoon. We'll, we have to publish the notice for the UDC amendments. It has to be at least 15 days before because of the Rambler. That will be next Saturday on the 19th. July 31st would be the City Council adoption of the building code amendments. August 4th, P&amp;Z hearing for the Unified Development Code amendments. And then August 28th is when everything will come together on the City Council agenda. So the UDC amendments, the adequate public facilities ordinance, and any other codes that may be identified between now and then. And then, of course, August 30th, 30th is when the building codes would be applicable or effective, which is the minimum 30 days from adoption. So those are kind of some of the upcoming dates that we'll be working toward. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Abdul?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a good presentation. It's a lot of work involved in this, to come up with this presentation. I really appreciate the team's efforts. Just a quick question on this. Do we have an idea where these multifamily and residential mixed-use development can come, or most likely the sites in the city of Irving?
They can come in any commercial district or any light industrial district. They can't be within 1,000 feet of a heavy industrial use, but other than that, they can be, and they can't be within 3,000 feet of the airport, but other than that, they can be in any essentially non-residential use. What we expect, maybe some of the older office properties might be identified for redevelopment.
My second question is, do we have the infrastructure needed for those most likely sites?
Probably not. I mean, that, that would be a case-by-case, a site-by-site, kind of what Todd had talked about. Some areas may have larger infrastructure, but if it was an office, you know, with, with, you know, maybe 10 floors worth of toilets, that's very different than when you have 300 multifamily units.
So in other words, if the infrastructure is not there as of now, so whenever these sites will come for consideration, the city has to put resources into developing the infrastructure.
Well, they'll be...
Yeah, the, the idea, Councilman, is that when they, when they approach the city with a development application, and they say, I want to convert this office building, or I want to build a multifamily in this commercial district, we would require them to analyze all the infrastructure, the water and sewer capacity, the roadway capacity, our stormdrainage capacity, and determine what the impact of that development will be on that infrastructure. And answer the question, does the infrastructure have the minimum capacity to serve what they're proposing? If the answer is no, they have two choices. They can either say, well, I'm, I'm not going to build my project because there's no capacity, or they could choose to pay for the capacity. We would not take on the responsibility to build infrastructure just to satisfy the demand of their development.
All right, thank you.
On that question to capacity, I mean, are we allowed to have some buffer so that we don't actually have to, like, get to the max of what our capacity is for a new development? It seems like we ought to, you know, it would be a, it would be a, a good policy to allow that buffer there so that we're not just pressed up against our max whenever a new development might come along.
It's an interesting question with a legitimate concern, or there's some nuances in how 840 was written that we need to consider as to where that, where's the threshold of minimum capacity? How's that defined? It, it's a good question that we'll need to make sure we consider.
Al?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is probably for you, K O, and that is during this period of time, beginning on the 14th, because, see, P&amp;Z is going to look at the UDC and then make a decision that evening. Am I correct?
No, on the 14th, on Monday, they will just have the presentation that you're getting today. It will actually come back on the 4th for their recommendation.
Okay. Then let me take it to the 4th. From the 4th on, or even during that period of time, is there any exposure for any kind of lawsuit or any kind of legal action?
Well, the new law doesn't go into effect until September 1.
I know that.
So I'll say that.
But during our process, all the way to, what is it, the 30th? Let me take it to the end of while we're going through this process.
I would, I, to answer that, I would prefer to do that in executive session than out here in a public meeting.
Good, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Abdul, to follow up on your good question, you would be, we'd be looking for council to adopt an adequate facilities ordinance, and so by law, by your ordinance, developers would have to go through this analysis process. We don't have that now. Philip, could you please walk through the, the general approach we take with developers now relative to adequate facilities, especially in water and sewer?
Yeah, we, we go through a similar process already today, where a developer comes to the table, we have a pre-development meeting and discuss the scope of their project. Each of the departments will get an understanding of the impact that they might have on the system, if there are concerns about capacity. We'll typically ask them to do some kind of analysis to prove up that capacity, whether that's running the hydraulic model that Freezing Nichols holds. So we, we have an informal process today to determine that capacity. I, I think in the past, there's probably been a, 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 a kind of a philosophy that if we don't have the capacity or if it's marginal, we'll build it at some point in a CIP project. I mean, we've, we've not had a, a, a strict up or down policy on maybe a borderline project. But what this ordinance would require is a very formalized process with definitions of what constitutes the minimum capacity, because that's a term that's in the law that we need to pay attention to, and how that's defined, so that if and when we come to a point to say, we don't have capacity, it's based on a defined process and defined criteria in an ordinance.
Well, I think everybody's done a great job of putting this stuff together. I think, you know, it's, while the 840 is, is out there and we're looking at some potential different uses than we anticipated, I think a lot of what we've talked today is probably good, good to be looking at anyway. We've talked at several of our meetings in the past about being more green, being more efficient and effective with our, our infrastructure as far as what we build and things of that nature. And I think we've, you know, there's this perception about apartments. I mean, there's today plenty of land available to build apartments on. We, there's probably 10,000 to 15,000 apartments could be built today just on the zoning categories that are open and ready to be built on. The thing that I appreciate is looking at our infrastructure, because realistically, the bond dollars that we were spending for, in building a bigger water tank, or, you know, money that we're spending to buy bigger compactors at the landfill because of waste that's coming out, all those things are being done to accommodate the growth that we've already had. And now that we've kind of reached a level, I would hate to spend, as you'll see, $14 million for a, a water tower, and 10 years from now need it to be twice as big, or even bigger than it is when we have already spent the dollars. So I think, knowing that we only had so many acres of land left to be developed, we had reached a point where we were pretty well aware that we were putting in three lanes, roads where we needed them, two-lane roads where we needed them, and bike lanes where we could put them in, and, and, you know, the, the basic things that we're going through today on MacArthur, one of the major components of that is not the road, it's the drainage. It's hooking it into and then bringing it back through all the neighborhoods and creating a way to, to control the volume and the velocity of the water that's been created because of the land that's been built on up in the northern sector, that we don't have the ability to absorb the water through, through the ground because of cement and, and the footprints of buildings and things of such. I mean, and it gets to a point where anybody that drives MacArthur, you'll, you'll see that instead of having the, the curbs are at a certain... that instead of having the, the curbs are at a certain height so that potentially, if they're, if it's done right, the water will not go over the curbs and they'll be able to drain it off in a certain amount of time, instead of always being there for a certain amount of time. And so I think the drainage thing, to me, has been a, a big issue, because we've taken over 2,000 homes out of the flood penalty that had been there for years because of the increase in the water volume and velocity that was created by the development. I think of the fact that when a Lavalita was built, and we built the single-family homes and the apartment complexes up in that area, it blew out the sewer system. So all of a sudden, there, all the sewage from Valley Ranch was backing up because it wasn't big enough to handle that, that development. And that's why we spent emergency, I think it was six or eight million dollars, to trench that all up and, and upsize that pipe. That's why every once in a while, we have something blow out because of the size of the connectors that haven't, but now they've been upsized, so we have less and less. And so the city's done, to me, my belief, for me, they have done an amazing job of getting us back to a point where we have safe drainage, we have safe streets, we have the proper street flu, flow of our sewage. Pipe busting has increased our water capacities within those areas where it was reduced. And so, and we've anticipated that there's going to be some more growth and development. We've anticipated there's going to be more apartments, but if we build even more and we lose, then we've, a lot of what we've done is for naught. So to me, it's important that we see what we can do to make sure that it's not on the back of the rest of the residents, as it has been here recently, based on the development. So for me, I'm very happy with each and every department and what they've brought forward and how they've looked at the opportunities that we have to, to maintain the standard that we have now of, of, of flow in our water and our sewer and our streets, and, and to look at things from a more green perspective, as we talked about earlier in the, in the subcommittee earlier. Look at the, what we're using for landscaping, look at the fact that we, you know, are now putting together the program where people can get green initiatives by saving runoff water and using it and things of that nature, and, and zero landscaping and things of that nature. So I think the things that we're asking for are just, just an evolution of where we are as a city and how we need to move forward with what, what we've done. So I, I appreciate everything and look forward to everybody working together to get it done. So Philip, your team did a, Chris and the, and all the departments did a great job.
Mark.
One thing we, I know we talked about before was the max density, and I didn't see that as part of the UDC proposed changes.
I'm looking at K O.
Can I say that there, as Philip mentioned, there are an array of things that we are also considering, but we've kind of, there's some particular challenges with some of these, so we're just kind of weighing options. So we will kind of bring that back and kind of talk to you. And when we go in executive session, I can kind of give you some context of how those will be briefed to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Philip?
Just, just one final, in, in context, we have been, because of the timeline Jocelyn laid out, the, the building code piece is the most time-critical. That's the thing where Wayne and Carolyn with, when K O's department and his legal team have been working on that ordinance, because that's going to have to be done first. We have been developing concepts on the zoning piece of it. That'll be the next critical path, is to flesh out those zoning amendments and get those done, because we have postings and hearings we have to hold in early August. And then, along with that, but the, the final piece will be that adequate public facilities ordinance. It does not require advanced posting or anything, and that can be, you know, at the end of August. So that's, that's the, the order of importance in which we're looking at these. We're identifying those things that are most critical to be responsibly responsive to Senate Bill 840 and the new chapter 218 in the local government code. There are going to be other things that aren't as critical that we maybe come back later to take care of, but in, because of the timeline, we need to look at and make some choices about what are those things that are most critical? Get those done, get those across the finish line. And that's, that's how we're approaching it, Mayor. And I want to be, I think one of the purposes of this presentation is just be completely transparent with the council about what our strategies are, and, and let you know, and hopefully, if there's a consensus to continue with these strategies and implement these on the schedule that we've talked about, you know, that's our, I guess that's the big question, and we're just looking for that confirmation.
Yep. Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, when you're meeting with your counterparts, the other mayors, I assume, and I'm not asking for an answer, that you are discussing their issues, so that we're trying to figure out what kind of alignments we might have in the future, so. Yep, okay.
Well, I think we have a consensus, Philip, for everybody to move forward with what you're doing. All right. K O., you want to read us into executive session? We can have a couple items we can re-talk about on this, and then collective bargaining negotiations, where we're at?
Yes, sir, happy to do that. The time is 2:20. The Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session to receive legal advice pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071.
And K O., did you want to read it for what we just did on 840 and talk about it?
Okay, thank you.
The fireworks finale, Irving Sparks and Stripes delivers the thrill people came to see.
The kids, they love fireworks.
Watch the fireworks and have fun with the family.
And the drone show is more spectacular than ever before.
Whatever we do, we always do it big.
People get excited about the 4th of July.
It has really, really been a home run, because people really look forward to coming out here.
This is by far the best event every year.
Irving Sparks and Stripes is so much more than lighting up the night. There will even be some surprises for this crowd.
The sky behind you is about to come alive with history.
First up, T-28 Trojan aircraft fly over the crowd at Levy Event Plaza.
That flyover earlier was just amazing. It was just a tremendous way to kind of open up the night.
Next up, Midtown Ten performed hits to pump up the crowd.
The music's great, the food's great, so it's a wonderful thing for the community.
People are having a great time. You can see they're enjoying themselves, and this is what Irving is all about.
Country music singer and headliner, Cafe Anderson, performed his hits and popular covers.
I'm so excited, because I live in North Texas, so being here with Irving, I'm excited to come and entertain.
Next, all eyes are on the sky for the drone show produced by Sky Elements. Remember, we talked surprises. Minutes before this, the crowd learned there is a reason to watch this show especially closely.
Tonight, we are going to have an official Guinness World Records attempt. The attempt is going to be the largest aerial image of a cowboy hat made out of drones.
And here comes that moment.
You had a total of 519 drones in your hat? It's a new Guinness World Records title.
Fireworks cap off tonight.
What do you hope the community takes away from this?
Appreciation for everyone, appreciation for your neighbors, appreciation for the country, what it means to be here in America.
It's cool that we have this. This is a neat thing for our community to offer, this great space to do it in.
Great way to celebrate our birthday.
A night to celebrate country and community at Irving Sparks and Stripes.
Everybody's coming together as one and just enjoying everything that's out here.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Sparks and Stripes. We head downtown to celebrate Independence Day at the city's annual Fourth of July parade, followed by music and fun.
People really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic, so, you know, what else can you ask for?
Hakuna Matata, No Worries, the Irving Youth Theater returns to the Art Center for another show-stopping performance of a Disney classic.
They have just done an amazing job, so we're super excited to share it with the community.
And in feature flicks, I review the newest installment of the Jurassic Park franchise, Jurassic World Rebirth, starring Scarlett Johansson and Jonathan Bailey.
If we get this DNA, millions of lives are saved.
Maybe we should, uh, make this quick, huh?
Hello, everyone, welcome to Irving Spotlight. I'm Susan Stevens. We begin tonight with one of the city's favorite summer events. The annual Sparks and Stripes Parade brings families together to enjoy the sights and sounds of marching bands and floats, followed by live music, games, and much more. The sounds of beating drums and bagpipes kick off a patriotic celebration at the city's annual Sparks and Stripes Parade.
I've been here for a long time doing this parade, and it never gets old. You know, people really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic, so, you know, what else can you ask for?
We come here every year, and it's really fun watching all the cars.
We're going to have fun getting candy and spending time with the community.
It just brings us all together, and then we see what Irving is and, like, their people.
I get to drive through and see all the diversity that we have within our community. When you really take the time, I'm driving slow enough, I can really look at the crowd, and you see that we have people from every country, every, every area of the, of the world here, and they're residents of Irving, and this is their hometown. And it really gives your heart a lot of excitement, because it is Independence Day, and they, they're happy to be in America.
After all the festive floats go by, the community heads to Heritage Park for music, food, and an expanded carnival.
The rides that are out there this year are fantastic. We stepped it up a little bit. Just really trying to make that, make it something different every year for our residents to look forward to, and we have tremendous support from our mayor and city council.
That support and camaraderie is evident, especially as Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses takes to the dunk tank to have the mayor take the first hit.
He's a good sport, but it was just fun. You know, it's all fun. It's all about engaging ourselves in the community and, you know, being able to laugh at ourselves.
And the mayor had no problem laughing at himself when participating in the second annual pie eating contest.
Well, I love pie, so it's not a hard thing for me to get excited about.
The Sparks and Stripes Parade and downtown celebration invites laughter and a sense of unity to the community.
I think America is a big quilt that is weaved together with all the different individual cultures that we have in this country, and I think 4th of July is a time to celebrate that and to get to know your, all the different cultures that make America great.
I think it's more and more important than it's ever been for us to come together as a community.
These are the kind of events you have to bring society together. We're all, we're all Americans, and we all love the 4th of July, so it's just such a great time to celebrate all together.
The last two Jurassic World films were a convoluted mess, a disappointing misfire after such a promising start to the revived franchise. After nearly three years, director Gareth Edwards tries his hand at a new installment with a brand-new cast. And while it is miles better than Fallen Kingdom and Dominion, that may not be saying much about Jurassic World Rebirth.
On the island we're headed to, two dozen species have survived there alone.
The film is set five years after the events of Jurassic World Dominion. Dinosaurs are on the brink of extinction again as our ecosystem is not built for them and they are struggling to survive. Those still alive have made a home for themselves in a more tropical environment similar to where they once thrived. Three of the most colossal creatures carry genetic material that could be the key to a life-saving drug that could benefit humankind. Q. Zora Bennett, a highly skilled operative, is hired by a pharmaceutical company to form a team and courageously extract DNA from the wild prehistoric reptiles. And like all Jurassic Park movies, this initial expedition quickly turns into a fight to survive.
If we get this DNA, millions of lives are saved.
From the get-go, you can appreciate Edwards bringing the story back to the basics and trying to capture the essence of the original 1993 Jurassic Park. Less is usually more, but when it comes to the script of Jurassic World Rebirth, I could have used a lot more. There's hardly any character development. With a talented cast featuring Scarlett Johansson, Mahershala Ali, and Jonathan Bailey, I expected to care about at least one of them. Unfortunately, there was not much effort to make them more memorable, and we only scratched the surface, if that with most of the characters. The only people you might care about in this story are members of the unexpected yet endearing family the team rescues from a capsized boat accident. However, where the film and Edwards succeed is in its action and filmmaking. Visually, Jurassic World Rebirth is a hit, returning to focused thrills instead of chaos that allows you to appreciate the true beauty of the incredible CGI and the stunning landscapes of Thailand. Spielberg's influence is evident throughout several frames, providing a little nostalgia for fans. And perhaps what Edwards does best is create tension. After a slow 40-minute setup, the film keeps up the momentum and engagement with back-to-back nail-binding confrontations with the dinosaurs that are sure to make audiences squirm and want to yell at the screen. If you can look past the lack of depth to the story and characters, you might be enthralled by the entertaining adventure. Jurassic World Rebirth is now showing. Check AMC Irving Mall and Alamo Drafthouse Cinema Los Cleaness for showtimes. While Jurassic World Rebirth roars into theaters, the Irving Youth Theater's production of The Lion King Jr. sets the stage for the community to feel the love from its talented young performers.
I am so excited to see this show come together.
We are presenting Lion King Jr. It's the culmination of an eight-day summer camp for kindergarten through eighth-grade students, and they have just done an amazing job, so we're super excited to share it with the community.
It's basically about Simba, who was blamed for the death of his father, so he ran away and he met Timon and Pumba.
And learns the way of Hakuna Matata, which means no worries. And he was in this, like, carefree world until Nala came and told him about Scar and how he took over the Pride Lands. So he went back to face his past and reclaim the rightful throne.
I am really excited to actually, like, be part of the tech, tech crew this time. I think it's the music, helping all the kids with the music and their lines. It's a new experience, because then it also helps me, uh, like, grow as a person too, with, like, helping all the little children.
I've always loved Lion King, and one of my dream roles was to be Simba, and, like, when I was, like, five years old, I, like, watched the animation, and now I look back at my five-year-old self, I'm like, hey, we did it. I would say Irving Youth Theater, it really, like, inspired me to do bigger things. Before I went into it, I was scared, like, nervous to speak in front of the class, and I wasn't being myself when I met new people, but now I feel more confident.
You're not just supporting I Y T or just, like, community, you're supporting these children that are working so hard for these shows.
Also, they get to enrich their own lives, because theater is an awesome opportunity to be joyful, have a great time, well, listening to a wonderful story, and, and also show support so that we can keep doing this with kids in the future.
In addition to movies and musicals, there's lots of fun things to do around the city. Levi Gomez, our man about town, shares his suggestions.
The summer camp program has returned to the Irving Arts Center. Lots of options are still available for kids and teens ages four through 16. From art to theater, go online to find the right camp for your youngster. Calling all puzzle pros, it's time for Puzzle Palooza. It's a head-to-head jigsaw showdown where strategy, speed, and community spirit meet. The action begins on July 18th at 5:30 p.m. here at Northwest Park Rec Center, and you got to love the entry fee, just donate a bag of candy to play. Get ready for Texas Author Con, a showcase of writers from the Lone Star State. The fourth annual event includes live readings, question-and-answer sessions, and panels about writing and the book industry. writing and the book industry. You'll have two days to experience it all, July 19th and 20th, here at the Irving Convention Center. Noises Off takes a fond look at the follies of theater folk. Main Stage presents a play within a play starting July 18th here at Dupree Theater. Don't miss the behind-the-scenes look at flub lines, miscues, and friction between cast members. It's time once again for one of our favorite events, the Quilt Expo. It's the place to find the latest techniques and products and learn new skills with cutting-edge education. The three-day event starts on July 31st here at the Irving Convention Center. The exhibition Rooted Vision showcases 25 self-taught Southern Black artists. Come to the Irving Arts Center to see their innovative use of found objects and everyday materials. Stop by in the afternoon, Tuesday through Saturday until October 18th.
And that wraps up this episode of Irving Spotlight. Join us next time as we stay cool at an Irving Cares event that is helping seniors beat the heat with a special giveaway. And we watch our city's young actors show off their theater skills at the community's annual one-act play competition. As always, tell us stories you'd like to see on the show. You can email us at ictn@irvingtexas.gov or connect with us on social media. So subscribe to our YouTube channel, like us on Facebook, and follow us on X and Instagram. We'd love to hear from you. Thanks so much for tuning in, and have a great evening. For Irving Spotlight, I'm Susan Stevens.
Banking on the future.
It was designed for us because we deserve it.
Wells Fargo employees get some insight into the progress of their new Irving campus, and we're showing you how they are giving back.
They want to be a part of this community more than just a building.
Tops and classes.
I find it really fun and cool experience to learn.
It helps the community to understand what we do.
Young people are learning about all that it takes to work for Irving PD. Go inside the Junior Police Academy, plus progress at the Irving Golf Club, and we remember former Mayor Marvin Randle. Now on City Source.
Local businesses make the latest Fortune 500 list, as some call Irving "the headquarters of headquarters." Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy. Those rankings are coming up later, but we begin with other economic development news. The massive new Wells Fargo campus is just about ready for employees to move in. The team cannot go inside just yet, but they are getting as close as they can. We have an update on the project and found out how employees are already getting involved in the community.
Posing for pictures in front of their new buildings and chatting with the Irving mayor. These Wells Fargo employees find that the patio at the Irving Convention Center provides great access to get the perfect shot of the buildings they will be moving into. The nearly $500 million campus will bring together Wells Fargo employees from a lot of smaller sites across the region and add jobs.
I'm super excited with the new campus.
Inside the Irving Convention Center, employees got some updates.
This is a massive effort. We're moving 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street, starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
You are very, very fortunate that you are literally two to three months away from kind of migrating to, in space, that's a bit eh, average, not great, to something this kind of world-class.
I was able to go into some of the floors, and it's amazing. It's great. It's prestigious.
But there is another big part of this story.
Today is really about community.
Today is our biggest backpack build we've ever had. We're partnering with our friends at Wells Fargo, and we're building over 3,500 backpacks. That's a record for the Irving Schools Foundation.
They are filling backpacks as part of the annual Supplies for Success campaign. As we show you each year, the Irving Schools Foundation distributes backpacks to local families to help them out. This year, the foundation believes this effort will help them serve a record number of families.
Each year, we grow and grow with the need growing in our community. And so our goal this year is to build at least 7,500 backpacks.
Along with supplies, the students will receive handwritten notes created by these Wells Fargo employees for inspiration and encouragement. And it's clear these team members are motivated and make quick work of all of this.
29 minutes. Can y'all believe it? 3,500 backpacks in 29 minutes. Five, six.
The employees also take part in some fun team building with the MacArthur High School Cardettes.
Many of you have never met other people who you might be on the same line of business.
And this may be a way to bring them all in step. On this day, they are feeling all of the superlatives.
It's going to be fantastic. It's going to be, it's gorgeous. It's beautiful. It's nice.
As they prepare to make their move into these buildings in Irving.
Something that I genuinely believe is a world-class campus.
The annual collection of supplies for the Irving Schools Foundation's Supplies for Success campaign continues. Drop off donations at any Irving Fire Station. Find out more at irvingtx.gov/supplies. Donations that do not go into backpacks are used to restock the Community to Classroom Store at the Irving Schools Foundation warehouse. Teachers can go there to pick up supplies they need for their classrooms. Irving has a new mobile app. You can download it from your App Store by searching for IrvingTX.gov. One of the main benefits of the new app is to make it easier to report concerns, such as high grass and weeds or abandoned vehicles. After creating an account, select a type of concern, add your comments, photos, and the location, then choose how you would like to be notified. Once submitted, city staff will respond and provide updates. Again, find the app through the App Store at IrvingTX.gov. Also, through the app, you can easily access commonly-used services. And keep in mind, you can also report concerns through the new city website at IrvingTX.gov. This is a look at the homepage. You will notice the vibrant colors and updated design. Right in the middle is a good place to start. It's called Choose Your Adventure, and it will connect you with popular attractions and activities. You will also find more eye-catching links to ICT and videos in the video section. Again, the new website is IrvingTX.gov. There are a lot of different divisions to the Irving Police Department, and that means there are a lot of lessons the community can learn about what officers do. An annual program offered by the department is specially created for young people during the summer, and we checked it out.
Anything you enjoyed about the class thus far?
It's a different type of summer school.
It's called the Junior Police Academy, and it's an opportunity for young students, grade levels sixth through eighth grade, that are interested in policing.
The Wolf Pack were a bunch of motorcycles.
During this week-long academy here at Bowie Middle School, the young people get to learn about a lot of the divisions of the Irving Police Department. This session is about the motorcycle unit.
Teach you from the ground floor of just how to ride a motorcycle to doing advanced maneuvers, high-speed maneuvers.
Well, let's start off with this, right?
Students also get to see what the tactical team uses, including this robot and the huge vehicle known as the bear.
Well, 10 to 15 of us in here with all of you.
I think it's great. It teaches a lot about the police and the stuff they do, like the bear. It's a really cool vehicle.
The classes are often hands-on and interactive, except when it comes to this next part.
I'm excited to see the canine dogs.
This is Keanu Vito. He's from the Netherlands. He's imported.
The students have a lot of questions about Vito.
They'll usually work up to 10 years. All his commands are Dutch. Most of the ones for police departments are going to be like your Belgians, German Shepherds, and your Dutchies.
And then we learned Vito is not into being on TV. So our crew stayed back when it came time for Vito to show how he can help nab suspects. Sharp skills demonstrated for sharp students.
These particular students are chosen to be in this program based off the school resource officer. So the schools that they go to, they're nominated to come.
And a lot of these participants have similar career goals in mind.
I'll be a police officer or a SWAT team.
I want to be a police. Now I like it.
I want to be a canine officer on a motor.
I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
We will need the help even when there is their opportunity to become police officers. So that's great. What's been your favorite thus far?
My bear.
Who? The bear? Okay. Did you guys go up in the bear? You climbed up? Okay.
Even if the young people ultimately choose other careers, they are building their understanding of police work and its role in the community, all as a result of their involvement in Irving's Junior Police Academy.
The fact that they're interested, they have a level of respect for police officers. It's inspiring. It's inspiring for sure.
Yeah, in addition to what you saw in that story, students learned about drone and crime scene operations, found out about the bomb squad, and more. Learn about other initiatives of the Irving Police Department on our IPD playlist at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center is working to move forward after a tornado severely damaged the building back in March. The team there is planning a fundraising lunch on Saturday, July 12th. It's called Let's Talk About It, and the event is not only about tornado recovery, it's also about sharing the story of the work that happens at the Family Advocacy Center every day.
Yeah, the Let's Talk About It event is really talking about all the services that the Family Advocacy Center provides and the programs that we are able to offer, things like Camp Hope and our awareness events. Those are big things. We want to make sure that the community knows that the Family Advocacy Center is doing for residents of Irving.
Heather spoke with me at the temporary new home of the FAC, 500 East John Carpenter Freeway, Suite 250. And we will be giving you a complete tour on an upcoming edition of City Source. Meanwhile, here are the details on that fundraiser. It's Saturday, July 12th, from 10:30 AM until 2:30 PM at that building on State Highway 114. Plates are $25, and extras, including car washes, are available at an additional charge. If you're watching on YouTube, you will find the really long link for the tickets in the description. The Omni Los Colinas is sharing these pictures now that it has completed a property-wide renovation. The latest phase included the redo of all 421 guest rooms, including more than 100 luxury suites. Also, the Los Colinas Ballroom. Earlier phases of the project updated the common areas and restaurants. In all, it's a $33 million property investment. The general manager said in a statement that Omni successfully elevated the guest experience while remaining true to the spirit of Los Colinas. Irving has eight companies on this year's Fortune 500 list. McKesson ranks ninth on the national list. It is also the highest ranked of all companies in DFW. Caterpillar is at number 64. You can see some of the other companies headquartered here and where they landed. The annual Fortune 500 list ranks companies by their revenue. A new effort is focusing on revitalizing downtown Irving. The nonprofit Better Block is working with the city on a temporary transformation that may provide some ideas for the future. Megan Gordon is the City of Irving's redevelopment coordinator, and she joins us now. Thanks so much for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Of course. And tell me about the overall goal and vision for this project.
So as we discuss revitalizing downtown, what we want to make sure is to, A, involve the community, and B, do effective change that people can see. So the great thing about this project is not only are we getting that community engagement, but we're taking those ideas and making actionable changes to downtown Irving that people can see and feel.
And we've heard about initiatives before to revitalize downtown. What makes this project different?
So the cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process. So not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away. So you'll see these temporary transformations in the fall time. It is going to be interactive, in your face, so the community can feel and actually get a sense of what they want the identity of Main Street and downtown Irving to be.
That leads it right into my next question about this temporary transformation. What will that actually look like and entail?
So really, it's going to be up to the community exactly the specifics of that, but think additional lighting, art, events, making a feel and a vibe for the area. So we can see anything from our Main Street Plaza area to having more activations, whether that be a Pilates class at Main Street Plaza, whether that be a bit more music, just really kind of looking at different elements that help make a place a place.
And as that happens, what's going to be the kind of the temporary impact on traffic and parking?
So for the main weekend, the opening weekend, we're looking at more of that main event where you might experience some closures. But kind of post that, it really is working with our businesses to ensure that parking is the main priority for everyone and everything remains accessible, and that we're adding to the charm of downtown and not taking away anything. So although there will be some, you know, temporary closures with all those activations, nothing too large or impactful. And again, the point of this is to find that happy medium of creating that community space while also making sure our businesses are really engaged in that process. So we have that combination of people stewarding our businesses and enjoying Main Street as a whole.
And there are some things happening right now. Tell me what you're looking for in this public input process.
We want to know why you want to come down to downtown Irving. If you want to eat at a restaurant, what's going to make you stay there? When you walk outside, do you want to have a seat and have lemonade outside? Do you want to hear a little live music? What's going to make you stay and enjoy this, the space?
Megan Gordon, thanks for being here.
Thanks so much.
And this project is moving. As Megan mentioned, there will be a community kickoff meeting on Tuesday, June 24th at 7:00 PM at the Huffman Building. Input will also be accepted through a survey that is posted at IrvingTX.gov/downtown. The deadline to complete the survey is July 13th. Planning for Irving's next fiscal year is underway. City leaders and the budget team are looking for suggestions, feedback, and opinions on what should be considered in the next budget. A public input session is set for Thursday, June 26th at 7:00 PM at Irving City Hall. Adoption of the budget is scheduled for September, then the new fiscal year begins on October 1st. Learn more about the current budget at IrvingTX.gov/budget. The Irving Golf Club is attracting more visitors. Robert Sheek looks at what is making it so popular.
Local golfer Mike Banus loves teeing it up at Irving Golf Club.
Greens are great. Fairways are cut well.
So much so that he regularly makes the roughly half-hour trip from his home in Trophy Club to play here.
The price for what you get, it makes it worth the drive. All of us came from all different parts of the area just to come to Irving to play golf.
Mike's not alone. Since reopening in 2019, following an extensive renovation, Irving Golf Club now hosts more than 40,000 rounds of golf annually, nearly seven times more than before.
It's no longer a secret. The hottest golf course in the Metroplex, I would say, is right here at the Irving Golf Club.
This April, crews completed the replacement of the course's cart paths, more than 17,000 linear feet, or nearly three and a half miles.
It's all the difference in the world. It used to be real bad. Now it's real good.
You can see the drastic change as these paths have gone from a rough ride to what now feels like a smooth three wood down the middle of the fairway, as Irving Golf Club climbs to the top of the leaderboard of public courses in North Texas.
It's a big bragging point for us. I would match our course up to any municipal course in the area.
The upgrades to Irving Golf Club have clearly been a birdie, but there's still some potential areas for improvement. As you can see by these puddles, the ground here in the driving range hitting area is clearly not level.
We want to come back and level that off. We also noticed that, you know, it gets hot out here, so we want to add potentially a couple shade structures on half of the driving range. Want to come back, want to do some renovations to the clubhouse at some point. Really want to give it a more comfortable restaurant-type feel so that even if you're not a golfer, you can come out here, you can watch a game or just socialize with friends.
The increases in rounds played and food and beverage revenue have Irving Golf Club operating in the black, as golfers like Mike continue to rave about Irving's commitment to municipal golf.
Nice. Thanks. It's great that the city spends the money on it because a lot of municipalities don't. But Irving does a great job. That's why we're here.
A drive well worth making for golfers in Irving and all across North Texas.
Canapaloy. Great putt.
Robert Sheek for City Source.
Registration for the fall session of the Irving 360 Civic Academy opens on June 23rd. As you see in this archive video, the academy provides an inside look at how city government operates. It's 11 weekly evening classes that are free. Register at IrvingTX.gov/Irving-Academy. The deadline to register is July 18th. Irving marks the passing of former Mayor Marvin Randle. Voters elected him to city council in 1971. Then he served as mayor from 1977 until 1981. Beyond local politics, he founded Irving Countertop, a business still operating today. Randle was involved in a number of nonprofits and civic organizations. Education, his church, and the Irving Heritage Society were among the causes important to him. ICT had featured him on Profiles in 2000.
Sometimes I sit down and I think I might have missed something because I haven't moved and have to start meeting new people or all together in a new community. But I'm so comfortable where I am. And I've had the opportunity to, to grow, to form a business, to make it as successful as I want to make it by hard work. And Irving has afforded me that opportunity.
In 2023, current Irving Mayor Rick Stouffer honored Randle at State of the City with the Corporate Award of Excellence.
I want to say thank y'all for what y'all have done. I want to say thank y'all for what y'all have done. It's been, uh, my family means everything in the world to me. And it's really been nice, and I just want to say thank you.
More recently, the City of Irving named the Downtown Clock Tower for him. Former Mayor Marvin Randle was 88 years old. Hello and welcome to ICTN's Pets of the Week from the Animal Care Campus and with Egan Dobson for Irving Animal Services. And if you're looking for a little sunshine in your life, we have the perfect pup named Soul. Tell us about Soul.
Yeah, Soul is about a year old, just a little bit over a year. She is super dog friendly. We're pretty sure she's actually potty trained, and she is obsessed with a tennis ball.
Woo, good girl!
So this is going to be a playful dog, good for a family, right?
Yeah, she's going to be very chill. She likes to do her own thing, which is this when she has her ball.
Yeah, and how did Soul come to him?
Yeah, Soul was found as a stray. She was microchipped, but the owner never came and got her, so she's been with us since.
Yeah, and we talk about responsible pet ownership, things like having your pet microchipped. And of course, there's a voucher program right now we want to talk about.
Yeah.
Vouchers like these. We'll get a close-up of this. And tell me about what this program involves.
Yeah, so here at Irving Animal Services, we provide all Irving residents a free service for them to get their animals spayed, neutered, microchipped, and rabies vaccinated. You would just call either one of the companies on the voucher, make an appointment with them, and it will be free to do so.
Free, that's everyone's favorite word. Talk to us about why this is so important. Microchipping can get your pet returned, but spay and neutering is especially important right now, too.
Yes, it helps 100% with the population here. Obviously, right now, we are just swimming in puppies. We have so many litters of puppies. Spaying and neutering not only helps prevent accidental litters from happening, but also future health issues with your pets. And of course, here in the City of Irving, we actually require all animals to be microchipped and to be rabies vaccinated.
Important to know those regulations. And we always like to pass along the happy updates to talk about pudding.
He got adopted, and we're so happy for him and his new family.
So there's an adoption special going on for a few more days to coincide with the holiday. Tell me about that.
Absolutely. It's a red wolf and mew. If you're feeling extra patriotic, is what I keep telling everybody, come on down and adopt.
All right, get all those puns in there, and get a perfect pup like Soul here who hasn't stopped playing with her ball the whole time we have been talking.
There she goes.
At the Animal Care Campus. She'll get her ball. We'll keep having fun here at the Animal Care Campus. Thanks a lot, Egan.
Of course, thank you so much.
And you can find more adoptable animals at the website on your screen, or visit the Animal Care Campus, 4140 Valley View Lane in Irving. New restaurants are open at the Toyota Music Factory. On the next edition of City Source, see the ribbon-cutting celebration. Also, get a look inside the temporary headquarters of Irving's Family Advocacy Center after a tornado forced the relocation of the staff. And we'll have highlights of Sparks and Stripes, those stories, and much more next time on City Source. Here is how to connect with us, and please make note of our new email address. It's ictn@irvingtx.gov. Our YouTube channel is youtube.com/thecityofirving. We hope you will subscribe and hit that like button on the videos you watch, and we always appreciate it when you leave us some positive comments. And you could look for updates on events and initiatives across the major social media platforms at the City of Irving. And that's it for this edition of City Source. Thanks for watching. Stay safe, and we'll see you next time.
Are you or someone you know interested in sharing your concerns? Well, good news! The City of Irving has just made it easier than ever for you to report those concerns thanks to the new Irving TX Gov app. Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search Irving TX Gov, and download the app. Then create an account with your name, email, and password. From there, it's as simple as tapping "Report a Concern" and entering your non-emergency issue. Again, non-emergency issue. Select the type of concern and add any important details, like the location or relevant photos you've taken. If you'd like to be notified of the city's response, go into Account Details and set up notification preferences. And while you're on the app, be sure to check out the latest news and upcoming events right here in Irving. At home or on the go, the Irving TX Gov app keeps you in the know and engaged with your city. So download the app today.
Stance, knock.
Hitting targets for growth.
Shoot.
Irving's Golden Sneaker Games are back, and bigger than ever.
Brad, your arrows?
Archery is one of this year's new additions.
Oh, nervous, because I'm not very good at this.
Nah, don't worry about it. The only thing you have to worry about is just not shooting anybody.
I do not know the technique yet, but I'm having fun.
Awesome! These are the 30-pound bows, so they have to really pull it back.
Oh yeah, that good upper body strength to pull the balls. I've decided to challenge myself. It's been methodically great.
Another new draw.
One, start!
Cycling.
I haven't done much riding since I moved to Irving. It was sort of a goal to prove to myself that I still had it.
Get a little exercise. All the good things in life.
Start!
Rosie Ming is competing in the Golden Sneaker Games for the first time.
She was one of those people who just started signing up for everything.
Our GoPro picked up how she kept herself motivated. While pushing for the best time.
It speaks to my competitiveness.
Along with providing these challenges.
You always pass on the left.
Organizer David Martinez also wants to show off Irving attractions, such as the city's trail system.
No cars.
A safe place to ride anytime.
And they're like, oh, wow, there's some back here.
You know, sometimes some people say it takes courage to do things you don't normally do. Glad I did this.
The Golden Sneaker Games are about more than strong bodies.
Well, you can use your mind, your brain.
Timed Team Puzzle Making is another new addition this year.
It actually went pretty quick.
Those activities join familiar favorites.
We are playing miniature golf, and I am defending my title from last year.
Don't do it, don't do it!
The competition stays friendly and fun.
Oh, yes! On film!
And that's part of the games here, just kind of being funny and just, you know, not taking everything so super serious.
Come on, come on!
This is great. Just to do stuff like this makes you feel so much better.
I think David should give us a cart.
Here on the pickleball court, action can get more intense.
Pretty competitive when the better players are on the court.
Got it. It gets very competitive, but I'm not in it for winning. I'm in it just to have fun.
Carolyn Borden figures she's the oldest player here.
I played tennis way back 60 years ago.
And pickleball is giving her away to stay athletic.
Oh, I think it's important that you get out there and just keep at it, no matter how old you are.
I'm 78 years old, but I don't mind playing against younger guys because that way it helps me improve my game.
Two weeks of competition.
Woo, you guys are the real stars here.
Wrap up with an awards banquet at the Heritage Senior Center.
There she is!
Even with medals and prizes at stake, competitors say they gain a lot more from all of these games.
Self-pride, okay? I mean, and to get out and enjoy the company.
And it's good for my health. It means that I may be independent longer and that I can function and keep up with people who are younger than me. So I'm not letting age define me.
We are still engaged in life and that we still have things to offer.
We can do anything we want to do. We just have to get up there and try.
Making a lasting impact for participants in Irving's Golden Sneaker Games.
I am so thankful for the City of Irving to put on this for us because we just have a fantastic time.
Congratulations. Awesome.
Thomas Gandy for City Source. Your ICTN team produced 44 videos in the month of June.
I've been around Irving for a long time, but I thought I knew everything that was here. No, this is blowing my mind.
I still can't drive past that intersection where Texas Stadium was without a little bit of a heart tug. Irving certainly holds a special place for us.
The cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process. So not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away.
I've been celebrating Juneteenth since I've been a very young child. So now that the city does it, especially here in the open park, I have to bring my family and friends.
Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search Irving TX Gov, and download the app.
It's family-owned, there's lots of warmth, lots of compassion. This is not just any taco shop in Irving, it is the taco shop in Irving.
We work with victims of violent crime, domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and making sure that they have that continuum of care is very important.
I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
The kids always love science programs. We've got some young scientists here that come to Valley Ranch.
This is a massive effort. We're moving 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street, starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The fireworks finale at Irving Sparks and Stripes delivers the thrill people came to see.
The kids, they love fireworks.
Watch the fireworks and have fun with the family.
And the drone show is more spectacular than ever before.
Whatever we do, we always do it big. People get excited about the Fourth of July.
It has really, really been a home run because people really look forward to coming out here.
This is by far the best event every year.
Irving Sparks and Stripes is so much more than lighting up the night. There will even be some surprises for this crowd.
This sky behind you is about to come alive with history.
First up, T-28 Trojan aircraft fly over the crowd at Levy Event Plaza.
That flyover earlier was just amazing. It was just a tremendous way to kind of open up the night.
Next up, Midtown Tin performed hits to pump up the crowd.
The music's great, the food's great, so it's a wonderful thing for the community.
People are having a great time. You can see they're enjoying themselves, and this is what Irving is all about.
Country music singer and headliner Kaffé Anderson performed his hits and popular covers.
I'm so excited because I live in North Texas. So being here with Irving, I'm excited to just come and entertain.
Next, all eyes are on the sky for the drone show produced by Sky Elements. Remember, we talked surprises. Minutes before this, the crowd learned there is a reason to watch this show especially closely.
Tonight, we are going to have an official Guinness World Records attempt. The attempt is going to be the largest aerial image of a cowboy hat made out of drones.
And here comes that moment.
You had a total of 519 drones in your hat? It's a new Guinness World Records title.
Fireworks cap off tonight.
What do you hope the community takes away from this?
Appreciation for everyone, appreciation for your neighbors, appreciation for the country, what it means to be here in America. It's cool that we have this. This is a neat thing for our community to offer, this great space to do it in. Great way to celebrate our birthday.
A night to celebrate country and community at Irving Sparks and Stripes.
Everybody's just coming together as one and just enjoying everything that's out here.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Sparks and Stripes. We head downtown to celebrate Independence Day at the city's annual Fourth of July parade, followed by music and fun.
People really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic, so you know, what else can you ask for?
Akuna Matata. No Worries, the Irving Youth Theater returns to the Art Center for another show-stopping performance of a Disney classic.
They have just done an amazing job, so we're super excited to share it with the community.
And in feature flicks, I review the newest installment of the Jurassic Park franchise, Jurassic World Rebirth, starring Scarlett Johansson and Jonathan Bailey.
If we get this DNA, millions of lives are saved.
Maybe we should make this quick, huh?
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Irving Spotlight. I'm Susan Stevens. We begin tonight with one of the city's favorite summer events. The annual Sparks and Stripes Parade brings families together to enjoy the sights and sounds of marching bands and floats, followed by live music, games, and much more. The sounds of beating drums and bagpipes kick off a patriotic celebration at the city's annual Sparks and Stripes Parade.
I've been here for a long time doing this parade, and it never gets old.
Happy Fourth, guys!
You know, people really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic, so you know, what else can you ask for?
We come here every year, and it's really fun watching all the cars.
We're going to have fun getting candy and spending time with the community.
It just brings us all together, and then we see what Irving is and like their people.
I get to drive through and see all the diversity that we have within our community. When you really take the time, I'm driving slow enough, I can really look at the crowd, and you see that we have people from every country, every, every area of the, of the world here, and they're residents of Irving, and this is their hometown. And it really gives your heart a lot of excitement because it is Independence Day, and they, they're happy to be in America.
After all the festive floats go by, the community heads to Heritage Park for music, food, and an expanded carnival.
The rides that are out there this year are fantastic. We stepped it up a little bit. Just really trying to make that, make it something different every year for our residents to look forward to, and we have tremendous support from our mayor and city council.
That support and camaraderie is evident, especially as Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses takes to the dunk tank to have the mayor take the first hit.
He's a good sport, but it was just fun. You know, it's all fun. It's all about engaging ourselves in the community and, you know, being able to laugh at ourselves.
And the mayor had no problem laughing at himself when participating in the second annual pie eating contest.
Well, I love pie, so it's not a hard thing for me to get excited about.
The Sparks and Stripes Parade and downtown celebration invites laughter and a sense of unity to the community.
I think America is a big quilt that is weaved together with all the different individual cultures that we have in this country. And I think Fourth of July is a time to celebrate that and to get to know your, all the different cultures that make America great.
I think it's more and more important than it's ever been for us to come together as a community.
These are the kind of events you have to bring society together. We're all, we're all Americans, and we all love the Fourth of July. So it's just such a great time to celebrate all together.
The last two Jurassic World films were a convoluted mess, a disappointing misfire after such a promising start to the revived franchise. After nearly three years, director Gareth Edwards tries his hand at a new installment with a brand-new cast. And while it is miles better than Fallen Kingdom and Dominion, that may not be saying much about Jurassic World Rebirth.
On the island we're headed to, two dozen species have survived there alone.
The film is set five years after the events of Jurassic World Dominion. Dinosaurs are on the brink of extinction again as our ecosystem is not built for them, and they are struggling to survive. Those still alive have made a home for themselves in a more tropical environment similar to where they once thrived. Three of the most colossal creatures carry genetic material that could be the key to a life-saving drug that could benefit humankind. Q. Zora Bennett, a highly skilled operative, is hired by a pharmaceutical company to form a team and courageously extract DNA from the wild prehistoric reptiles. And like all Jurassic Park movies, this initial expedition quickly turns into a fight to survive.
If we get this DNA, millions of lives are saved.
From the get-go, you can appreciate Edwards bringing the story back to the basics and trying to capture the essence of the original 1993 Jurassic Park. Less is usually more, but when it comes to the script of Jurassic World Rebirth, I could have used a lot more. There's hardly any character development, with a talented cast featuring Scarlett Johansson, Mahershala Ali, and Jonathan Bailey. With a talented cast featuring Scarlett Johansson, Mahershala Ali, and Jonathan Bailey, I expected to care about at least one of them. Unfortunately, there was not much effort to make them more memorable, and we only scratched the surface, if that with most of the characters. The only people you might care about in this story are members of the unexpected yet endearing family the team rescues from a capsized boat accident. However, where the film and Edwards succeed is in its action and filmmaking. Visually, Jurassic World Rebirth is a hit, returning to focus thrills instead of chaos that allows you to appreciate the true beauty of the incredible CGI and the stunning landscapes of Thailand. Spielberg's influence is evident throughout several frames, providing a little nostalgia for fans. And perhaps what Edwards does best is create tension. After a slow 40-minute setup, the film keeps up the momentum and engagement with back-to-back nail-biting confrontations with the dinosaurs that are sure to make audiences squirm and want to yell at the screen. If you can look past the lack of depth to the story and characters, you might be enthralled by the entertaining adventure. Jurassic World Rebirth is now showing. Check AMC Irving Mall and Alamo Drafthouse Cinema Los Cleaness for showtimes. While Jurassic World Rebirth roars into theaters, the Irving Youth Theater's production of The Lion King Jr. sets the stage for the community to feel the love from its talented young performers.
I am so excited to see this show come together.
We are presenting Lion King Jr. It's the culmination of an eight-day summer camp for kindergarten through eighth-grade students. And they have just done an amazing job, so we're super excited to share it with the community.
It's basically about Simba, who was blamed for the death of his father. So he ran away, and he met Timon Pumba.
The king is dead. And if it weren't for you, he'd still be alive.
And learns the way of Hakuna Matata, which means no worries. And he was in this like carefree world until Nala came and told him about Scar and how he took over the Pride Lands. So he went back to face his past and reclaim the rightful throne.
I am really excited to actually be part of the tech crew this time. I think it's the music, helping all the kids with the music and their lines. It's a new experience because then it also helps me like grow as a person too, with like helping all the little children.
I've always loved Lion King. And one of my dream roles was to be Simba. And like when I was like five years old, I like watched the animation. And now I look back at my five-year-old self, I'm like, hey, we did it. I would say Irving Youth Theater, it really like inspired me to do bigger things. Before I went into it, I was scared, like nervous to speak in front of the class. And I wasn't being myself when I met new people. But now I feel more confident.
You're not just supporting IYT or just like community, you're supporting these children that are working so hard for these shows.
Also, they get to enrich their own lives because theater is an awesome opportunity to be joyful, have a great time listening to a wonderful story, and also show support so that we can keep doing this with kids in the future.
In addition to movies and musicals, there's lots of fun things to do around the city. Levi Gomez, our man about town, shares his suggestions.
The summer camp program has returned to the Irving Arts Center. Lots of options are still available for kids and teens ages four through 16. From art to theater, go online to find the right camp for your youngster. Calling all puzzle pros, it's time for Puzzle Palooza. It's a head-to-head jigsaw showdown where strategy, speed, and community spirit meet. The action begins on July 18th at 5:30 PM here at Northwest Park Rec Center. And you gotta love the entry fee. Just donate a bag of candy to play. Get ready for Texas Author Con, a showcase of writers from the Lone Star State. The fourth annual event includes live readings, question-and-answer sessions, and panels about writing and the book industry. You'll have two days to experience it all, July 19th and 20th, here at the Irving Convention Center. Noises Off takes a fond look at the follies of theater folk. Main Stage presents a play within a play starting July 18th here at Dupree Theater. Don't miss the behind-the-scenes look at plotlines, miscues, and friction between cast members. It's time once again for one of our favorite events, the Quilt Expo. It's the place to find the latest techniques and products and learn new skills with cutting-edge education. The three-day event starts on July 31st here at the Irving Convention Center. The exhibition Rooted Vision showcases 25 self-taught Southern black artists. Come to the Irving Arts Center to see their innovative use of found objects and everyday materials. Stop by in the afternoon, Tuesday through Saturday, until October 18th.
And that wraps up this episode of Irving Spotlight. Join us next time as we stay cool at an Irving Cares event that is helping seniors beat the heat with a special giveaway. And we watch our city's young actors show off their theater skills at the community's annual one-act play competition. As always, tell us stories you'd like to see on the show. You can email us at ictn@irvingtexas.gov or connect with us on social media. So subscribe to our YouTube channel, like us on Facebook, and follow us on X and Instagram. We'd love to hear from you. Thanks so much for tuning in, and have a great evening. For Irving Spotlight, I'm Susan Stevens.
Banking on the future.
It was designed for us because we deserve it.
Wells Fargo employees get some insight into the progress of their new Irving campus, and we're showing you how they are giving back.
They want to be a part of this community more than just a building.
Tops and classes.
I find it a really fun and cool experience to learn.
It helps the community to understand what we do.
Young people are learning about all that it takes to work for Irving PD, go inside the Junior Police Academy, plus progress at the Irving Golf Club, and we remember former Mayor Marvin Randle. Now on City Source. Local businesses make the latest Fortune 500 list as some call Irving "the headquarters of headquarters." Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy. Those rankings are coming up later, but we begin with other economic development news. The massive new Wells Fargo campus is just about ready for employees to move in. The team cannot go inside just yet, but they are getting as close as they can. We have an update on the project and found out how employees are already getting involved in the community. Posing for pictures in front of their new buildings and chatting with the Irving mayor. These Wells Fargo employees find that the patio at the Irving Convention Center provides great access to get the perfect shot of the buildings they will be moving into. The nearly $500 million campus will bring together Wells Fargo employees from a lot of smaller sites across the region and at jobs.
I'm super excited with the new campus.
Inside the Irving Convention Center, employees got some updates.
This is a massive effort. We're moving 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street, starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
You are very, very fortunate that you are literally two to three months away from kind of migrating to, in space, that's a bit eh, average, not great, to something that's kind of world-class.
I was able to go into some of the floors, and it's amazing. It's great, it's prestigious.
But there is another big part of this story.
Today is really about community.
Today is our biggest backpack build we've ever had. We're partnering with our friends at Wells Fargo, and we're building over 3,500 backpacks. That's a record for the Irving Schools Foundation.
They are filling backpacks as part of the annual Supplies for Success campaign. As we show you each year, the Irving Schools Foundation distributes backpacks to local families to help them out. This year, the foundation believes this effort will help them serve a record number of families.
Each year, we grow and grow with the need growing in our community. And so our goal this year is to build at least 7,500 backpacks.
Along with supplies, the students will receive handwritten notes created by these Wells Fargo employees for inspiration and encouragement. And it's clear these team members are motivated and make quick work of all of this.
29 minutes, can you all believe it? 3,500 backpacks in 29 minutes. Five, six.
The employees also take part in some fun team building with the MacArthur High School cardettes.
Many of you have never met other people who you might be on the same line of business.
And this may be a way to bring them all in step. On this day, they are feeling all of the superlatives.
It's gonna be fantastic. It's gonna be, it's gorgeous, it's beautiful, it's nice.
As they prepare to make their move into these buildings in Irving.
Something that I genuinely believe is a world-class campus.
The annual collection of supplies for the Irving Schools Foundation Supplies for Success campaign continues. Drop off donations at any Irving fire station. Find out more at irvingtx.gov/supplies. Donations that do not go into backpacks are used to restock the Community to Classroom store at the Irving Schools Foundation warehouse. Teachers can go there to pick up supplies they need for their classrooms. Irving has a new mobile app. You can download it from your App Store by searching for Irving TX.gov. One of the main benefits of the new app is to make it easier to report concerns, such as high grass and weeds or abandoned vehicles. After creating an account, select a type of concern, add your comments, photos, and the location, then choose how you would like to be notified. Once submitted, city staff will respond and provide updates. Again, find the app through the App Store at Irving TX.gov. Also through the app, you can easily access commonly-used services. And keep in mind, you can also report concerns through the new city website at irvingtx.gov. This is a look at the homepage. You will notice the vibrant colors and updated design. Right in the middle is a good place to start. It's called Choose Your Adventure, and it will connect you with popular attractions and activities. You will also find more eye-catching links to ICTN videos in the video section. Again, the new website is irvingtx.gov. There are a lot of different divisions to the Irving Police Department, and that means there are a lot of lessons the community can learn about what officers do. An annual program offered by the department, especially created for young people during the summer, and we checked it out.
Anything you enjoyed about the class thus far?
It's a different type of summer school.
It's called the Junior Police Academy, and it's an opportunity for young students, grade levels sixth through eighth grade, that are interested in policing.
The Wolf Pack were a bunch of motorcycles.
During this week-long academy here at Bowie Middle School, the young people get to learn about a lot of the divisions of the Irving Police Department. This session is about the motorcycle unit.
Teach you from the ground floor of just how to ride a motorcycle to doing advanced maneuvers, high-speed maneuvers. Let's start off with this, right?
Students also get to see what the tactical team uses, including this robot and the huge vehicle known as the Bear.
I think it's great. It teaches a lot about the police and the stuff they do, like the Bear. It's a really cool vehicle.
The classes are often hands-on and interactive, except when it comes to this next part.
I'm excited to see the canine dogs.
The students have a lot of questions about Vito.
They'll usually work up to 10 years. All his commands are Dutch. Most of the ones for police departments are gonna be like your Belgians, German Shepherds, and your Dutchies.
And then we learned Vito is not into being on TV. So our crew stayed back when it came time for Vito to show how he can help nab suspects. Sharp skills demonstrated for sharp students.
These particular students are chosen to be in this program based off the school resource officers. So the schools that they go to, they're nominated to come.
And a lot of these participants have similar career goals in mind.
I'll be a police officer or a SWAT team.
I want to be a police now. I like it.
I want to be a canine officer on a motor. I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
We will need the help even when it's their opportunity to become police officers. So that's great.
What's been your favorite thus far?
My bear.
Who? The bear? Okay, did you guys go up in the bear? You climbed up? Okay.
Even if the young people ultimately choose other careers, they are building their understanding of police work and its role in the community, all as a result of their involvement in Irving's Junior Police Academy.
The fact that they're interested, they have a level of respect for police officers. It's inspiring, it's inspiring for sure.
Yeah, in addition to what you saw in that story, students learned about drone and crime scene operations, found out about the bomb squad, and more. Learn about other initiatives of the Irving Police Department on our IPD playlist at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center is working to move forward after a tornado severely damaged the building back in March. The team there is planning a fundraising lunch on Saturday, July 12th. It's called Let's Talk About It. And the event is not only about tornado recovery, it's also about sharing the story of the work that happens at the Family Advocacy Center every day.
Yeah, the Let's Talk About It event is really talking about all the services that the Family Advocacy Center provides and the programs that we are able to offer, things like camp hope and our awareness events. Those are big things we want to make sure that the community knows that the Family Advocacy Center is doing for residents of Irving.
Heather spoke with me at the temporary new home of the FAC, 500 East John Carpenter Freeway, Suite 250. And we will be giving you a complete tour on an upcoming edition of City Source. Meanwhile, here are the details on that fundraiser. It's Saturday, July 12th, from 10:30 AM until 2:30 PM at that building on State Highway 114. Plates are $25, and extras, including car washes, are available at an additional charge. If you're watching on YouTube, you will find the really long link for the tickets in the description. The Omni Los Colinas is sharing these pictures now that it has completed a property-wide renovation. The latest phase included the redo of all 421 guest rooms, including more than 100 luxury suites. Also, the Los Colinas Ballroom. Earlier phases of the project updated the common areas and restaurants. In all, it's a $33 million property investment. The general manager said in a statement that Omni successfully elevated the guest experience while remaining true to the spirit of Los Colinas. Irving has eight companies on this year's Fortune 500 list. McKesson ranks ninth on the national list. It is also the highest ranked of all companies in DFW. Caterpillar is at number 64. You can see some of the other companies headquartered here and where they landed. The annual Fortune 500 list ranks companies by their revenue. A new effort is focusing on revitalizing downtown Irving. The nonprofit Better Block is working with the city on a temporary transformation that may provide some ideas for the future. Megan Gordon is the City of Irving's redevelopment coordinator, and she joins us now. Thanks so much for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Of course. And tell me about the overall goal and vision for this project.
So as we discussed revitalizing downtown, what we want to make sure is to, A, involve the community, and B, do effective change that people can see. So the great thing about this project is not only are we getting that community engagement, but we're taking those ideas and making actionable changes to downtown Irving that people can see and feel.
And we've heard about initiatives before to revitalize downtown. What makes this project different?
So the cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process. So not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away. So you'll see these temporary transformations in the fall time. It is gonna be interactive, in your face, so the community can feel and actually get a sense of what they want the identity of Main Street in downtown Irving to be.
That leads it right into my next question about this temporary transformation. What will that actually look like and entail?
So really, it's gonna be up to the community exactly the specifics of that, but think additional lighting, art, events, making a feel and a vibe for the area. So we can see anything from our Main Street Plaza area to having more activations, whether that be a Pilates class at Main Street Plaza, whether that be a bit more music, just really kind of looking at different elements that help make a place a place.
And as that happens, what's gonna be the kind of the temporary impact on traffic and parking?
So for the main weekend, the opening weekend, we're looking at more of that main event where you might experience some closures. But kind of post that, it really is working with our businesses to ensure that parking is the main priority for everyone and everything remains accessible, and that we're adding to the charm of downtown and not taking away anything. So although there will be some temporary closures with all those activations, nothing too large or impactful. And again, the point of this is to find that happy medium of creating that community space while also making sure our businesses are really engaged in that process. So we have that combination of people stewarding our businesses and enjoying Main Street as a whole.
And there are some things happening right now. Tell me what you're looking for in this public input process.
We want to know why you want to come down to downtown Irving. If you want to eat at a restaurant, what's gonna make you stay there? When you walk outside, do you want to have a seat and have lemonade outside? Do you want to hear a little live music? What's gonna make you? What's going to make you stay and enjoy the space?
Megan Gordon, thanks for being here.
Thanks so much.
And this project is moving. As Megan mentioned, there will be a community kickoff meeting on Tuesday, June 24th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Huffman Building. Input will also be accepted through a survey that is posted at IrvingTX.gov/downtown. The deadline to complete the survey is July 13th. Planning for Irving's next fiscal year is underway. City leaders and the budget team are looking for suggestions, feedback, and opinions on what should be considered in the next budget. A public input session is set for Thursday, June 26th, at 7:00 p.m. at Irving City Hall. Adoption of the budget is scheduled for September, then the new fiscal year begins on October 1st. Learn more about the current budget at IrvingTX.gov/budget. The Irving Golf Club is attracting more visitors. Robert Sheek looks at what is making it so popular.
Local golfer Mike Baynes loves teeing it up at Irving Golf Club.
Greens are great. Fairways are cut well.
So much so that he regularly makes the roughly half-hour trip from his home and trophy club to play here.
The price for what you get, it makes it worth the drive. All of us came from all different parts of the area just to come to Irving to play golf.
Mike's not alone. Since reopening in 2019, following an extensive renovation, Irving Golf Club now hosts more than 40,000 rounds of golf annually, nearly seven times more than before.
It's no longer a secret. The hottest golf course in the Metroplex, I would say, is right here at the Irving Golf Club.
This April, crews completed the replacement of the course's cart paths, more than 17,000 linear feet, or nearly three and a half miles.
It's all the difference in the world. It used to be real bad. Now it's real good.
You can see the drastic change as these paths have gone from a rough ride to what now feels like a smooth three wood down the middle of the fairway as Irving Golf Club climbs to the top of the leaderboard of public courses in North Texas.
It's a big bragging point for us. I would match our course up to any municipal course in the area.
The upgrades to Irving Golf Club have clearly been a birdie, but there's still some potential areas for improvement. As you can see by these puddles, the ground here in the driving range hitting area is clearly not level.
We want to come back and level that off. We also noticed that, you know, it gets hot out here, so we want to add potentially a couple shade structures on half of the driving range. Want to come back, want to do some renovations to the clubhouse at some point. Really want to give it a more comfortable restaurant-type feel so that even if you're not a golfer, you can come out here, you can watch a game, or just socialize with friends.
That's pretty.
The increases in rounds played and food and beverage revenue have Irving Golf Club operating in the black as golfers like Mike continue to rave about Irving's commitment to municipal golf.
Nice. Thanks.
It's great that the city spends the money on it because a lot of municipalities don't. But Irving does a great job. That's why we're here.
A drive well worth making for golfers in Irving and all across North Texas.
Canapaloy. Great putt.
Robert Sheek for City Source.
Registration for the fall session of the Irving 360 Civic Academy opens on June 23rd. As you see in this archive video, the academy provides an inside look at how city government operates. It's 11 weekly evening classes that are free. Register at IrvingTX.gov/Irving-Academy. The deadline to register is July 18th. Irving marks the passing of former Mayor Marvin Randle. Voters elected him to city council in 1971. Then he served as mayor from 1977 until 1981. Beyond local politics, he founded Irving Countertop, a business still operating today. Randle was involved in a number of nonprofits and civic organizations. Education, his church, and the Irving Heritage Society were among the causes important to him. ICTN featured him on Profiles in 2000.
Sometimes I sit down and I think I might have missed something because I haven't moved and have to start meeting new people or all together in a new community. But I'm so comfortable where I am. And I've had the opportunity to grow, to form a business, to make it as successful as I want to make it by hard work. And Irving has afforded me that opportunity.
In 2023, current Irving Mayor Rick Stouffer honored Randle at State of the City with the Corporate Award of Excellence.
I want to say thank y'all for what y'all have done. And it's been, uh... My family means everything in the world to me. And it's really been nice, and I just want to say thank you.
More recently, the City of Irving named the Downtown Clock Tower for him. Former Mayor Marvin Randle was 88 years old. Hello and welcome to ICTN's Pets of the Week from the Animal Care Campus and with Egan Dobson for Irving Animal Services. And if you're looking for a little sunshine in your life, we have the perfect pup named Soul. Tell us about Soul.
Yeah, Soul is about a year old, just a little bit over a year. She is super dog-friendly. We're pretty sure she's actually potty-trained, and she is obsessed with a tennis ball.
Good girl!
So this is going to be a playful dog, good for a family, right?
Yeah, she's going to be very chill. She likes to do her own thing, which is this when she has her ball.
Yeah, and how did Soul come to animal care?
Yeah, Soul was found as a stray. She was microchipped, but the owner never came and got her, so she's been with us since.
Yeah, and we talk about responsible pet ownership, things like having your pet microchipped. And of course, there's a voucher program right now we want to talk about.
Yeah.
Vouchers like these. We'll get a close-up of this. And tell me about what this program involves.
Yeah, so here at Irving Animal Services, we provide all Irving residents a free service for them to get their animals spayed, neutered, microchipped, and rabies vaccinated. You would just call either one of the companies on the voucher, make an appointment with them, and it will be free to do so.
Free. That's everyone's favorite word. And talk to us about why this is so important. Microchipping can get your pet returned, but spay neutering is especially important right now, too.
Yes, it helps 100% with the population here. Obviously, right now, we are just swimming in puppies. We have so many litters of puppies. Spaying and neutering not only helps prevent accidental litters from happening, but also future health issues with your pets. And of course, here in the City of Irving, we actually require all animals to be microchipped and to be rabies vaccinated.
Important to know those regulations. And we always like to pass along the happy updates to talk about pudding.
He got adopted, and we're so happy for him and his new family.
So there's an adoption special going on for a few more days to coincide with the holiday. Tell me about that.
Absolutely. It's a red wolf a mew. If you're feeling extra patriotic, is what I keep telling everybody, come on down and adopt.
All right, get all those puns in there, and get a perfect pup like Soul here, who hasn't stopped playing with her ball the whole time we have been talking.
There she goes.
At the Animal Care Campus. She'll get her ball. We'll keep having fun here at the Animal Care Campus. Thanks a lot, Egan.
Of course. Thank you so much.
And you can find more adoptable animals at the website on your screen or visit the Animal Care Campus, 4140 Valley View Lane in Irving. New restaurants are open at the Toyota Music Factory. On the next edition of City Source, see the ribbon-cutting celebration. Also, get a look inside the temporary headquarters of Irving's Family Advocacy Center after a tornado forced the relocation of the staff. And we'll have highlights of Sparks and Stripes, those stories, and much more next time on City Source. Here is how to connect with us, and please make note of our new email address. It's ictn@irvingtx.gov. Our YouTube channel is youtube.com/thecityofirving. We hope you will subscribe and hit that Like button on the videos you watch, and we always appreciate it when you leave us some positive comments. And you could look for updates on events and initiatives across the major social media platforms at the City of Irving. And that's it for this edition of City Source. Thanks for watching. Stay safe, and we'll see you next time.
Are you or someone you know interested in sharing your concerns? Well, good news! The City of Irving has just made it easier than ever for you to report those concerns thanks to the new IrvingTX.gov app. Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search IrvingTX.gov, and download the app. Then create an account with your name, email, and password. From there, it's as simple as tapping "Report a Concern" and entering your non-emergency issue. Again, non-emergency issue. Select the type of concern and add any important details, like the location or relevant photos you've taken. If you'd like to be notified of the city's response, go into Account Details and set up Notification Preferences. And while you're on the app, be sure to check out the latest news and upcoming events right here in Irving. At home or on the go, the IrvingTX.gov app keeps you in the know and engaged with your city. So download the app today.
Stance, knock.
Hitting targets for growth.
Shoot.
Irving's Golden Sneaker Games are back, and bigger than ever.
Brad, your arrows.
Archery is one of this year's new additions.
Oh, nervous, because I'm not very good at this.
No, don't worry about it. The only thing you have to worry about is just not shooting anybody.
I do not know the technique yet, but I'm having fun.
Awesome! These are the 30-pound bows, so they have to really pull it back.
Oh, yeah, they have good upper body strength to pull the balls. I've decided to challenge myself. It's been nothing but great.
Another new draw.
One, start!
Cycling.
I haven't done much riding since I moved to Irving. It was sort of a goal to prove to myself that I still had it.
Get a little exercise. All the good things in life.
Start!
Rosie Ming is competing in the Golden Sneaker Games for the first time.
And she was one of those people who just started signing up for everything.
Our GoPro picked up how she kept herself motivated while pushing for the best time.
It speaks to my competitiveness.
Along with providing these challenges.
You always pass on the left.
Organizer David Martinez also wants to show off Irving attractions, such as the city's trail system.
No cars.
A safe place to ride anytime.
And they're like, oh, wow, there's some back here.
You know, sometimes some people say it takes courage to do things you don't normally do. Glad I did this.
The Golden Sneaker Games are about more than strong bodies.
You can use your mind, your brain.
Timed Team Puzzle Making is another new addition this year.
It actually went pretty quick.
Those activities join familiar favorites.
We are playing miniature golf, and I am defending my title from last year.
Don't do it! Don't do it!
The competition stays friendly and fun.
Oh, yes! Home film.
And that's part of the games here, just kind of being funny and just, you know, not taking everything so super serious.
Come on! Come on!
This is great. Just to do stuff like this makes you feel so much better.
I think David should give us a cart.
Here on the pickleball court, action can get more intense.
Pretty competitive when the better players are on the court.
Got it. It gets very competitive, but I'm not in it for winning. I'm in it just to have fun.
Carolyn Gordon figures she's the oldest player here.
I played tennis way back 60 years ago.
And pickleball is giving her away to stay athletic.
Oh! I think it's important that you get out there and just keep at it, no matter how old you are.
I'm 78 years old, but I don't mind playing against younger guys because that way it helps me improve my game.
Two weeks of competition.
Woo! You guys are the real stars here.
Wrap up with an awards banquet at the Heritage Senior Center.
There she is!
Even with medals and prizes at stake, competitors say they gain a lot more from all of these games.
Self-credit, okay? I mean, and to get out and enjoy the company.
And it's good for my health. It means that I may be independent longer and that I can function and keep up with people who are younger than me. So I'm not letting age define me.
We are still engaged in life and that we still have things to offer.
We can do anything we want to do. We just have to get up there and try.
Making a lasting impact for participants in Irving's Golden Sneaker Games.
I am so thankful for the City of Irving to put on this for us because we just have a fantastic time.
Congratulations. Awesome.
Thomas Gandy for City Source. Your ICTN team produced 44 videos in the month of June.
I've been around Irving for a long time, but I thought I knew everything that was here. No, this is blowing my mind.
I still can't drive past that intersection where Texas Stadium was without a little bit of a heart tug. Irving certainly holds a special place for us.
The cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process. So not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away.
I've been celebrating Juneteenth since I've been a very young child. So now that the city does it, especially here in the open park, I have to bring my family a friend.
Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search IrvingTX.gov, and download the app.
It's family-owned. There's lots of warmth, lots of compassion. This is not just any taco shop in Irving. It is the taco shop in Irving.
We work with victims of violent crime, domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and making sure that they have that continuum of care is very important.
I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
The kids always love science programs. We've got some young scientists here that come to Valley Ranch.
This is a massive effort, removing 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The fireworks finale, Irving Sparks and Stripes delivers the thrill people came to see.
The kids, they love fireworks.
Watch the fireworks and have fun with the family.
And the drone show is more spectacular than ever before.
Whatever we do, we always do it big.
People get excited about the Fourth of July.
It has really, really been a home run because people really look forward to coming out here. This is by far the best event every year.
Irving Sparks and Stripes is so much more than lighting up the night. There will even be some surprises for this crowd.
This sky behind you is about to come alive with history.
First up, T-28 Trojan aircraft fly over the crowd at Levy Event Plaza.
That flyover earlier was just amazing. It was just a tremendous way to kind of open up the night.
Next up, Midtown Ten performed hits to pump up the crowd.
The music's great, the food's great, so it's a wonderful thing for the community.
People are having a great time. You can see they're enjoying themselves, and this is what Irving is all about.
Country music singer and headliner Cafe Anderson performed his hits and popular covers.
I'm so excited because I live in North Texas, so being here with Irving, I'm excited it's coming to entertain.
Next, all eyes are on the sky for the Drone Show, produced by Sky Elements. Remember, we talked surprises. Minutes before this, the crowd learned there is a reason to watch this show especially closely.
Tonight, we are going to have an official Guinness World Records attempt. The attempt is going to be the largest aerial image of a cowboy hat made out of drones.
And here comes that moment.
You had a total of 519 drones in your hat? It's a new Guinness World Records title.
Fireworks cap off tonight.
What do you hope the community takes away from this?
Appreciation for everyone. Appreciation for your neighbors, appreciation for the country, what it means to be here in America.
It's cool that we have this. This is a neat thing for our community to offer, this great space to do it in. Great way to celebrate our birthday.
A night to celebrate country and community at Irving Sparks and Stripes.
Everybody's just coming together as one and just enjoying everything that's out here.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Sparks and Stripes. We head downtown to celebrate Independence Day at the city's annual Fourth of July parade, followed by music and fun.
People really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic. So, you know, what else can you ask for?
Akuna Matata. No worries. The Irving Youth Theater returns to the Art Center for another show-stopping performance of a Disney classic.
They have just done an amazing job, so we're super excited to share it with the community.
And in feature flicks, I review the newest installment. And in feature flicks, I review the newest installment to the Jurassic Park franchise, Jurassic World Rebirth, starring Scarlett Johansson and Jonathan Bailey.
If we get this DNA, millions of lives are saved.
Maybe we should make this quick, huh?
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Irving Spotlight. I'm Susan Stevens. We begin tonight with one of the city's favorite summer events. The annual Sparks and Stripes Parade brings families together to enjoy the sights and sounds of marching bands and floats, followed by live music, games, and much more. The sounds of beating drums and bagpipes kick off a patriotic celebration at the city's annual Sparks and Stripes Parade.
I've been here for a long time doing this parade, and it never gets old. You know, people really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic. So, you know, what else can you ask for?
We come here every year, and it's really fun watching all the cars.
We're gonna have fun getting candy and spending time with the community.
It just brings us all together, and then we see what Irving is and like their people.
I get to drive through and see all the diversity that we have within our community. When you really take the time, I'm driving slow enough, I can really look at the crowd, and you see that we have people from every country, every area of the world here, and they're residents of Irving, and this is their hometown. And it really gives your heart a lot of excitement because it is Independence Day, and they're happy to be in America. After all the festive floats go by, the community heads to Heritage Park for music, food, and an expanded carnival.
The rides that are out there this year are fantastic. We stepped it up a little bit. Just really trying to make that, make it something different every year for our residents to look forward to. And we have tremendous support from our mayor and city council.
That support and camaraderie is evident, especially as Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses takes to the dunk tank to have the mayor take the first hit. He's a good sport, but it was just fun. You know, it's all fun. It's all about engaging ourselves in the community and, you know, being able to laugh at ourselves. And the mayor had no problem laughing at himself when participating in the second annual pie eating contest. Well, I love pie, so it's not a hard thing for me to get excited about. The Sparks and Stripes Parade and downtown celebration invites laughter and a sense of unity to the community.
I think America is a big quilt that is weaved together with all the different individual cultures that we have in this country. And I think Fourth of July is a time to celebrate that and to get to know your, all the different cultures that make America great.
I think it's more and more important than it's ever been for us to come together as a community.
These are the kind of events you have to bring society together. We're all, we're all Americans, and we all love the Fourth of July. So it's just such a great time to celebrate all together.
The last two Jurassic World films were a convoluted mess, a disappointing misfire after such a promising start to the revived franchise. After nearly three years, director Gareth Edwards tries his hand at a new installment with a brand-new cast. And while it is miles better than Fallen Kingdom and Dominion, that may not be saying much about Jurassic World Rebirth.
On the island we're headed to, two dozen species have survived there alone.
The film is set five years after the events of Jurassic World Dominion. Dinosaurs are on the brink of extinction again as our ecosystem is not built for them and they are struggling to survive. Those still alive have made a home for themselves in a more tropical environment similar to where they once thrived. Three of the most colossal creatures carry genetic material that could be the key to a life-saving drug that could benefit humankind. Q. Zora Bennett, a highly skilled operative, is hired by a pharmaceutical company to form a team and courageously extract DNA from the wild prehistoric reptiles. And like all Jurassic Park movies, this initial expedition quickly turns into a fight to survive.
If we get this DNA, millions of lives are saved.
From the get-go, you can appreciate Edwards bringing the story back to the basics and trying to capture the essence of the original 1993 Jurassic Park. Less is usually more, but when it comes to the script of Jurassic World Rebirth, I could have used a lot more. There's hardly any character development. With a talented cast featuring Scarlett Johansson, Mahershala Ali, and Jonathan Bailey, I expected to care about at least one of them. Unfortunately, there was not much effort to make them more memorable, and we only scratched the surface, if that with most of the characters. The only people you might care about in this story are members of the unexpected yet endearing family the team rescues from a capsized boat accident. However, where the film and Edwards succeed is in its action and filmmaking. Visually, Jurassic World Rebirth is a hit, returning to focused thrills instead of chaos that allows you to appreciate the true beauty of the incredible CGI and the stunning landscapes of Thailand. Spielberg's influence is evident throughout several frames, providing a little nostalgia for fans. And perhaps what Edwards does best is create tension. After a slow 40-minute setup, the film keeps up the momentum and engagement with back-to-back nail-biting confrontations with the dinosaurs that are sure to make audiences squirm and want to yell at the screen. If you can look past the lack of depth to the story and characters, you might be enthralled by the entertaining adventure. Jurassic World Rebirth is now showing. Check AMC Irving Mall and Alamo Drafthouse Cinema Los Cleaness for showtimes. While Jurassic World Rebirth roars into theaters, the Irving Youth Theater's production of The Lion King Jr. sets the stage for the community to feel the love from its talented young performers.
I am so excited to see this show come together.
We are presenting Lion King Jr. It's the culmination of an eight-day summer camp for kindergarten through eighth-grade students, and they have just done an amazing job, so we're super excited to share it with the community.
It's basically about Simba, who was blamed for the death of his father. So he ran away and he met Timon Pumba.
And learns the way of Hakuna Matata, which means no worries. And he was in this like carefree world until Nala came and told him about Scar and how he took over the Pride Lands. So he went back to face his past and reclaim the rightful throne.
I am really excited to actually be part of the tech crew this time. I think it's the music, helping all the kids with the music and their lines. It's a new experience because then it also helps me like grow as a person too with like helping all the little children.
I've always loved Lion King, and one of my dream roles was to be Simba. And like, when I was like five years old, I like watched the animation. And now I look back at my five-year-old self, I'm like, hey, we did it. I would say Irving Youth Theater, it really like inspired me to do bigger things. Before I went into it, I was scared, like nervous to speak in front of the class. And I wasn't being myself when I met new people. But now I feel more confident.
You're not just supporting IYT or just like community, you're supporting these children that are working so hard for these shows.
Also, they get to enrich their own lives because theater is an awesome opportunity to be joyful, have a great time, listening to a wonderful story, and also show support so that we can keep doing this with kids in the future.
In addition to movies and musicals, there's lots of fun things to do around the city. Levi Gomez, our man about town, shares his suggestion.
The summer camp program has returned to the Irving Arts Center. Lots of options are still available for kids and teens ages four through 16. From art to theater, go online to find the right camp for your youngster. Calling all puzzle pros, it's time for Puzzle Palooza. It's a head-to-head jigsaw showdown where strategy, speed, and community spirit meet. The action begins on July 18th at 5:30 PM here at Northwest Park Rec Center. And you gotta love the entry fee. Just donate a bag of candy to play. Get ready for Texas Author Con, a showcase of writers from the Lone Star State. The fourth annual event includes live readings, question-and-answer sessions, and panels about writing and the book industry. You'll have two days to experience it all, July 19th and 20th, here at the Irving Convention Center. Noises Off takes a fond look at the follies of theater folk. Main Stage presents a play within a play starting July 18th here at Dupree Theater. Don't miss the behind-the-scenes look at flub lines, miscues, and friction between cast members. It's time once again for one of our favorite events, the Quilt Expo. It's the place to find the latest techniques and products and learn new skills with cutting-edge education. The three-day event starts on July 31st here at the Irving Convention Center. The exhibition Rooted Vision showcases 25 self-taught Southern Black artists. Come to the Irving Arts Center to see their innovative use of found objects and everyday materials. Stop by in the afternoon, Tuesday through Saturday, until October 18th.
And that wraps up this episode of Irving Spotlight. Join us next time as we stay cool at an Irving Cares event that is helping seniors beat the heat with a special giveaway. And we watch our city's young actors show off their theater skills at the community's annual one-act play competition. As always, tell us stories you'd like to see on the show. You can email us at ictn@irvingtexas.gov or connect with us on social media. So subscribe to our YouTube channel, like us on Facebook, and follow us on X and Instagram. We'd love to hear from you. Thanks so much for tuning in and have a great evening. For Irving Spotlight, I'm Susan Stevens.
Thinking on the future.
It was designed for us because we deserve it.
Wells Fargo employees get some insight into the progress of their new Irving campus, and we're showing you how they are giving back.
They want to be a part of this community more than just a building.
Tops and classes.
I find it really fun and cool experience to learn.
It helps the community to understand what we do.
Young people are learning about all that it takes to work for Irving PD. Go inside the Junior Police Academy, plus progress at the Irving Golf Club, and we remember former Mayor Marvin Randle. Now on City Source. Local businesses make the latest Fortune 500 list, as some call Irving "the headquarters of headquarters." Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy. Those rankings are coming up later, but we begin with other economic development news. The massive new Wells Fargo campus is just about ready for employees to move in. The team cannot go inside just yet, but they are getting as close as they can. We have an update on the project and found out how employees are already getting involved in the community. Posing for pictures in front of their new buildings and chatting with the Irving mayor. These Wells Fargo employees find that the patio at the Irving Convention Center provides great access to get the perfect shot of the buildings they will be moving into. The nearly $500 million campus will bring together Wells Fargo employees from a lot of smaller sites across the region and add jobs.
I'm super excited with the new campus.
Inside the Irving Convention Center, employees got some updates.
This is a massive effort. We're moving 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street, starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
You are very, very fortunate that you are literally two to three months away from kind of migrating to, in space, that's a bit eh, average, not great, to something that's kind of world-class.
I was able to go into some of the floors, and it's amazing. It's great. It's prestigious.
But there is another big part of this story.
Today is really about community.
Today is our biggest backpack build we've ever had. We're partnering with our friends at Wells Fargo, and we're building over 3,500 backpacks. That's a record for the Irving Schools Foundation.
They are filling backpacks as part of the annual Supplies for Success campaign. As we show you each year, the Irving Schools Foundation distributes backpacks to local families to help them out. This year, the foundation believes this effort will help them serve a record number of families.
Each year we grow and grow with the need growing in our community. And so our goal this year is to build at least 7,500 backpacks.
Along with supplies, the students will receive handwritten notes created by these Wells Fargo employees for inspiration and encouragement. And it's clear these team members are motivated and make quick work of all of this.
29 minutes. Can you all believe it? 3,500 backpacks in 29 minutes. Five, six.
The employees also take part in some fun team building with the MacArthur High School Cardets.
Many of you have never met other people who you might be on the same line of business.
And this may be a way to bring them all in step. On this day, they are feeling all of the superlatives.
It's going to be fantastic. It's going to be, it's gorgeous. It's beautiful. It's nice.
As they prepare to make their move into these buildings in Irving.
Something that I genuinely believe is a world-class campus.
The annual collection of supplies for the Irving Schools Foundation Supplies for Success campaign continues. Drop off donations at any Irving fire station. Find out more at irvingtx.gov/supplies. Donations that do not go into backpacks are used to restock the Community to Classroom store at the Irving Schools Foundation warehouse. Teachers can go there to pick up supplies they need for their classrooms. Irving has a new mobile app. You can download it from your App Store by searching for Irving TX Gov. One of the main benefits of the new app is to make it easier to report concerns such as high grass and weeds or abandoned vehicles. After creating an account, select a type of concern, add your comments, photos, and the location, then choose how you would like to be notified. Once submitted, city staff will respond and provide updates. Again, find the app through the App Store at Irving TX Gov. Also through the app, you can easily access commonly-used services. And keep in mind, you can also report concerns through the new city website at irvingtx.gov. This is a look at the homepage. You will notice the vibrant colors and updated design. Right in the middle is a good place to start. It's called Choose Your Adventure, and it will connect you with popular attractions and activities. You will also find more eye-catching links to ICTN videos in the video section. Again, the new website is irvingtx.gov. There are a lot of different divisions to the Irving Police Department, and that means there are a lot of lessons the community can learn about what officers do. An annual program offered by the department is specially created for young people during the summer, and we checked it out.
Anything you enjoyed about the class thus far?
It's a different type of summer school.
It's called the Junior Police Academy, and it's an opportunity for young students, grade levels sixth through eighth grade, that are interested in policing.
The Wolf Pack were a bunch of motorcycles.
During this week-long academy here at Bowie Middle School, the young people get to learn about a lot of the divisions of the Irving Police Department. This session is about the motorcycle unit.
Teach you from the ground floor of just how to ride a motorcycle to doing advanced maneuvers, high-speed maneuvers. Let's start off with this, right?
Students also get to see what the tactical team uses, including this robot and the huge vehicle known as the bear.
I think it's great. It teaches a lot about the police and the stuff they do, like the bear. It's a really cool vehicle.
The classes are often hands-on and interactive, except when it comes to this next part.
I'm excited to see the canine dogs.
The students have a lot of questions about Vito.
They'll usually work up to 10 years. All his commands are Dutch. Most of the ones for police departments are going to be like your Belgians, German Shepherds, and your Dutchies.
And then we learned Vito is not into being on TV. So our crew stayed back when it came time for Vito to show how he can help nab suspects. Sharp skills demonstrated for sharp students.
These particular students are chosen to be in this program based off the school resource officers. So the schools that they go to, they're nominated to come.
And a lot of these participants have similar career goals in mind.
I'll be a police officer or a SWAT team.
I want to be a police. Now I like it.
I want to be a canine officer. I want a water. I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
We will need the help even when there is their opportunity to become police officers. So that's great. What's been your favorite thus far?
The bear.
Who? The bear? Okay. Did you guys go up in the bear? You climbed up? Okay.
Even if the young people ultimately choose other careers, they are building their understanding of police work and its role in the community, all as a result of their involvement in Irving's Junior Police Academy.
The fact that they're interested, they have a level of respect for police officers. It's inspiring. It's inspiring for sure.
Yeah, in addition to what you saw in that story, students learned about drone and crime scene operations, found out about the bomb squad, and more. Learn about other initiatives of the Irving Police Department on our IPD playlist at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center is working to move forward after a tornado.
after a tornado severely damaged the building back in March. The team there is planning a fundraising lunch on Saturday, July 12th. It's called Let's Talk About It. And the event is not only about tornado recovery, it's also about sharing the story of the work that happens at the Family Advocacy Center every day.
Yeah, the Let's Talk About It event is really talking about all the services that the Family Advocacy Center provides and the programs that we are able to offer, things like Camp Hope and our awareness events. Those are big things. We want to make sure that the community knows that the Family Advocacy Center is doing for residents of Irving.
Heather spoke with me at the temporary new home of the FAC, 500 East John Carpenter Freeway, Suite 250. And we will be giving you a complete tour on an upcoming edition of City Source. Meanwhile, here are the details on that fundraiser. It's Saturday, July 12th, from 10:30 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. at that building on State Highway 114. Plates are $25, and extras, including car washes, are available at an additional charge. If you're watching on YouTube, you will find the really long link for the tickets in the description. The Omni Los Colinas is sharing these pictures now that it has completed a property-wide renovation. The latest phase included the redo of all 421 guest rooms, including more than 100 luxury suites. Also, the Los Colinas Ballroom. Earlier phases of the project updated the common areas and restaurants. In all, it's a $33 million property investment. The general manager said in a statement that Omni successfully elevated the guest experience while remaining true to the spirit of Los Colinas. Irving has eight companies on this year's Fortune 500 list. McKesson ranks ninth on the national list. It is also the highest ranked of all companies in DFW. Caterpillar is at number 64. You can see some of the other companies headquartered here and where they landed. The annual Fortune 500 list ranks companies by their revenue. A new effort is focusing on revitalizing downtown Irving. The nonprofit Better Block is working with the city on a temporary transformation that may provide some ideas for the future. Megan Gordon is the City of Irving's redevelopment coordinator, and she joins us now. Thanks so much for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Of course. And tell me about the overall goal and vision for this project.
So as we discuss revitalizing downtown, what we want to make sure is to, A, involve the community, and B, do effective change that people can see. So the great thing about this project is not only are we getting that community engagement, but we're taking those ideas and making actionable changes to downtown Irving that people can see and feel.
And we've heard about initiatives before to revitalize downtown. What makes this project different?
So the cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process. So not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away. So you'll see these temporary transformations in the fall time. It is going to be interactive, in your face, so the community can feel and actually get a sense of what they want the identity of Main Street and downtown Irving to be.
That leads it right into my next question about this temporary transformation. What will that actually look like and entail?
So really, it's going to be up to the community exactly the specifics of that, but think additional lighting, art, events, making a feel and a vibe for the area. So we can see anything from our Main Street Plaza area to having more activations, whether that be a Pilates class at Main Street Plaza, whether that be a bit more music, just really kind of looking at different elements that help make a place a place.
And as that happens, what's going to be the kind of the temporary impact on traffic and parking?
So for the main weekend, the opening weekend, we're looking at more of that main event where you might experience some closures. But kind of post that, it really is working with our businesses to ensure that parking is the main priority for everyone and everything remains accessible, and that we're adding to the charm of downtown and not taking away anything. So although there will be some temporary closures with all those activations, nothing too large or impactful. And again, the point of this is to find that happy medium of creating that community space while also making sure our businesses are really engaged in that process. So we have that combination of people stewarding our businesses and enjoying Main Street as a whole.
And there are some things happening right now. Tell me what you're looking for in this public input process.
We want to know why you want to come down to downtown Irving. If you want to eat at a restaurant, what's going to make you stay there? When you walk outside, do you want to have a seat and have lemonade outside? Do you want to hear a little live music? What's going to make you stay and enjoy the space?
Megan Gordon, thanks for being here.
Thanks so much.
And this project is moving. As Megan mentioned, there will be a community kickoff meeting on Tuesday, June 24th at 7:00 p.m. at the Huffman Building. Input will also be accepted through a survey that is posted at IrvingTX.gov/downtown. The deadline to complete the survey is July 13th. Planning for Irving's next fiscal year is underway. City leaders and the budget team are looking for suggestions, feedback, and opinions on what should be considered in the next budget. A public input session is set for Thursday, June 26th at 7:00 p.m. at Irving City Hall. Adoption of the budget is scheduled for September, then the new fiscal year begins on October 1st. Learn more about the current budget at IrvingTX.gov/budget. The Irving Golf Club is attracting more visitors. Robert Sheek looks at what is making it so popular.
Local golfer Mike Banus loves teeing it up at Irving Golf Club. Greens are great. Fairways are cut well. So much so that he regularly makes the roughly half-hour trip from his home and trophy club to play here. The price for what you get, it makes it worth the drive. All of us came from all different parts of the area just to come to Irving to play golf. Mike's not alone. Since reopening in 2019, following an extensive renovation, Irving Golf Club now hosts more than 40,000 rounds of golf annually, nearly seven times more than before. It's no longer a secret. The hottest golf course in the metroplex, I would say, is right here at the Irving Golf Club. This April, crews completed the replacement of the course's cart paths, more than 17,000 linear feet, or nearly three and a half miles. It's all the difference in the world. It used to be real bad. Now it's real good. You can see the drastic changes these paths have gone from a rough ride to what now feels like a smooth three wood down the middle of the fairway as Irving Golf Club climbs to the top of the leaderboard of public courses in North Texas. It's a big bragging point for us. I would match our course up to any municipal course in the area. The upgrades to Irving Golf Club have clearly been a birdie, but there's still some potential areas for improvement. As you can see by these puddles, the ground here in the driving range hitting area is clearly not level. We want to come back and level that off. We also noticed that, you know, it gets hot out here, so we want to add potentially a couple shade structures on half the driving range. Want to come back, want to do some renovations to the clubhouse at some point. Really want to give it a more comfortable restaurant-type feel so that even if you're not a golfer, you can come out here, you can watch a game, or just socialize with friends. The increases in rounds played and food and beverage revenue have Irving Golf Club operating in the black as golfers like Mike continue to rave about Irving's commitment to municipal golf. Thanks. It's great that the city spends the money on it because a lot of municipalities don't. But Irving does a great job. That's why we're here. A drive well worth making for golfers in Irving and all across North Texas. Robert Sheek for City Source.
Registration for the fall session of the Irving 360 Civic Academy opens on June 23rd. As you see in this archive video, the academy provides an inside look at how city government operates. It's 11 weekly evening classes that are free. Register at IrvingTX.gov/Irving-Academy. The deadline to register is July 18th. Irving marks the passing of former Mayor Marvin Randle. Voters elected him to city council in 1971. Then he served as mayor from 1977 until 1981. Beyond local politics, he founded Irving Countertop, a business still operating today. Randle was involved in a number of nonprofits and civic organizations. Education, his church, and the Irving Heritage Society were among the causes important to him. ICTN featured him on Profiles in 2000.
Sometimes I sit down and I think I might have missed something because I haven't moved and have to start meeting new people or all together in a new community. But I'm so comfortable where I am. And I've had the opportunity to, to grow, to form a business, to make it as successful as I want to make it by hard work. And Irving has afforded me that opportunity.
In 2023, current Irving Mayor Rick Stouffer honored Randle at State of the City with the Corporate Award of Excellence.
I want to say thank y'all for what y'all have done. And it's been, uh, my family means everything in the world to me. And it's really been nice, and I just want to say thank you.
More recently, the City of Irving named the Downtown Clock Tower for him. Former Mayor Marvin Randle was 88 years old. Hello and welcome to ICTN's Pets of the Week from the Animal Care Campus and with Egan Dobson from Irving Animal Services. And if you're looking for a little sunshine in your life, we have the perfect pup named Soul. Tell us about Soul.
Yeah, Soul is about a year old, just a little bit over a year. She is super dog-friendly. We're pretty sure she's actually potty-trained, and she is obsessed with a tennis ball.
So this is going to be a playful dog, good for a family, right?
Yeah, she's going to be very chill. She likes to do her own thing, which is this when she has her ball.
Yeah, and how did Soul come to him?
Yeah, Soul was found as a stray. She was microchipped, but the owner never came and got her, so she's been with us since.
Yeah, and we talk about responsible pet ownership, things like having your pet microchipped. And of course, there's a voucher program right now we want to talk about.
Yeah.
Vouchers like these. We'll get a close-up of this. And tell me about what this program involves.
Yeah, so here at Irving Animal Services, we provide all Irving residents a free service for them to get their animals spayed and neutered, microchipped, and rabies vaccinated. You would just call either one of the companies on the voucher, make an appointment with them, and it will be free to do so.
Free. That's everyone's favorite word. And talk to us about why this is so important. Microchipping can get your pet returned, but spay and neutering is especially important right now, too.
Yes, it helps 100% with the population here. Obviously, right now, we are just swimming in puppies. We have so many litters of puppies. Spaying and neutering not only helps prevent accidental litters from happening, but also future health issues with your pets. And of course, here in the City of Irving, we actually require all animals to be microchipped and to be rabies vaccinated.
Important to know those regulations. And we always like to pass along the happy updates, too. Talk about pudding.
He got adopted, and we're so happy for him and his new family.
So there's an adoption special going on for a few more days to coincide with a holiday. Tell me about that.
Absolutely. It's a red wolf amew. If you're feeling extra patriotic, is what I keep telling everybody, come on down and adopt.
All right, get all those puns in there, and get a perfect pup like Soul here who hasn't stopped playing with her ball the whole time we have been talking.
There she goes.
She'll get her ball. We'll keep having fun here at the Animal Care Campus. Thanks a lot, Egan.
Of course. Thank you so much.
And you can find more adoptable animals at the website on your screen or visit the Animal Care Campus, 4140 Valley View Lane in Irving. New restaurants are open at the Toyota Music Factory. On the next edition of City Source, see the ribbon-cutting celebration. Also, get a look inside the temporary headquarters of Irving's Family Advocacy Center after a tornado forced the relocation of the staff. And we'll have highlights of Sparks and Stripes, those stories, and much more next time on City Source. Here's how to connect with us, and please make note of our new email address. It's ictn@irvingtx.gov. Our YouTube channel is youtube.com/thecityofirving. We hope you will subscribe and hit that like button on the videos you watch, and we always appreciate it when you leave us some positive comments. And you could look for updates on events and initiatives across the major social media platforms at the City of Irving. And that's it for this edition of City Source. Thanks for watching. Stay safe, and we'll see you next time.
Are you or someone you know interested in sharing your concerns? Well, good news! The City of Irving has just made it easier than ever for you to report those concerns thanks to the new IrvingTXGov app. Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search IrvingTXGov, and download the app. Then create an account with your name, email, and password. From there, it's as simple as tapping "Report a Concern" and entering your non-emergency issue. Again, non-emergency issue. Select the type of concern and add any important details, like the location or relevant photos you've taken. If you'd like to be notified of the city's response, go into Account Details and set up Notification Preferences. And while you're on the app, be sure to check out the latest news and upcoming events right here in Irving. At home or on the go, the IrvingTXGov app keeps you in the know and engaged with your city. So download the app today.
Stance, knock.
Hitting targets for growth.
Shoot.
Irving's Golden Sneaker Games are back, and bigger than ever. Archery is one of this year's new additions.
Oh, nervous, because I'm not very good at this.
No, don't worry about it. The only thing you have to worry about is just not shooting anybody.
I do not know the technique yet, but I'm having fun.
Awesome. These are the 30-pound bows, so they have to really pull it back.
Oh, yeah, that good upper body strength to pull the balls. I've decided to challenge myself. It's been methodically great.
Another new draw.
One, start.
Cycling.
I haven't done much riding since I moved to Irving. It was sort of a goal to prove to myself that I still had it.
Get a little exercise. All the good things in life.
Start.
Rosie Ming is competing in the Golden Sneaker Games for the first time.
She was one of those people who just started signing up for everything.
Our GoPro picked up how she kept herself motivated while pushing for the best time.
It speaks to my competitiveness.
Along with providing these challenges.
You always pass on the left.
Organizer David Martinez also wants to show off Irving attractions, such as the city's trail system.
No cars.
A safe place to ride anytime.
And they're like, oh, wow, there's some back here.
You know, sometimes some people say it takes courage to do things you don't normally do. Glad I did this.
The Golden Sneaker Games are about more than strong bodies.
You can use your mind, your brain.
Timed Team Puzzle Making is another new addition this year.
It actually went pretty quick.
Those activities join familiar favorites.
We are playing miniature golf, and I am defending my title from last year.
The competition stays friendly and fun.
Oh, yes, on film.
And that's part of the games, too, just kind of being funny and just, you know, not taking everything so super serious.
This is great. Just to do stuff like this makes you feel so much better. I think David should give us a cart.
Here on the pickleball court, action can get more intense.
Pretty competitive when the better players are on the court.
Got it. It gets very competitive, but I'm not in it for winning. I'm in it just to have fun.
Carolyn Borden figures she's the oldest player here.
I played tennis way back 60 years ago.
And pickleball is giving her away to stay athletic.
Oh, I think it's important that you get out there and just keep at it, no matter how old you are.
I'm 78 years old, but I don't mind playing against younger guys because that way it helps me improve my game.
Two weeks of competition.
You guys are the real stars here.
Wrap up with an awards banquet at the Heritage Senior Center. Even with medals and prizes at stake, competitors say they gain a lot more from all of these games.
Self-fright, okay? I mean, and to get out and enjoy the company.
And it's good for my health. It means that I may be independent longer and that I can function and keep up with people who are younger than me. So I'm not letting age define me.
We are still engaged in life and that we still have things to offer.
We can do anything we want to do. We just have to get up there and try.
Making a lasting impact for participants in Irving's Golden Sneaker Games.
I am so thankful for the City of Irving to put on this for us because we just have a fantastic time.
Congratulations. Awesome.
Thomas Gandy for City Source. Your ICTN team produced 44 videos in the month of June.
I've been around Irving for a long time, but I thought I knew everything that was here? No, this is blowing my mind.
I still can't drive past that intersection where Texas Stadium was without a little bit of a heart tug. Irving certainly holds a special place for us.
The cool thing about this project is it's a 120-day process. So not only are we moving quick on this community engagement piece, but we're taking those ideas and making action on them right away.
I've been celebrating Juneteenth since I've been a very young child. So now that the city does it, especially here in the So now that the city does it, especially here in the open park, I have to bring my family a friend.
Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search Irving TX Gov, and download the app.
It's family-owned. There's lots of warmth, lots of compassion. This is not just any taco shop in Irving. It is the taco shop in Irving.
We work with victims of violent crime, domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and making sure that they have that continuum of care is very important.
I want to be a police officer because I want to help the citizens and feel more comfortable and safe in their community.
The kids always love science programs. We've got some young scientists here that come to Valley Ranch.
This is a massive effort. We're moving 4,500 people into those two gorgeous buildings across the street, starting in August and will be finished by the end of September.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The fireworks finale, Irving Sparks and Stripes, delivers the thrill people came to see.
The kids, they love fireworks.
Watch the fireworks and have fun with the family.
And the drone show is more spectacular than ever before.
Whatever we do, we always do it big.
People get excited about the Fourth of July.
It has really, really been a home run because people really look forward to coming out here.
This is by far the best event every year.
Irving Sparks and Stripes is so much more than lighting up the night. There will even be some surprises for this crowd.
The sky behind you is about to come alive with history.
First up, T-28 Trojan aircraft fly over the crowd at Levy Event Plaza.
That flyover earlier was just amazing. It was just a tremendous way to kind of open up the night.
Next up, Midtown Ten performed hits to pump up the crowd.
The music's great, the food's great, so it's a wonderful thing for the community.
People are having a great time. You can see they're enjoying themselves. And this is what Irving is all about.
Country music singer and headliner Cafe Anderson performed his hits and popular covers.
I'm so excited because I live in North Texas. So being here with Irving, I'm excited it's coming to entertain.
Next, all eyes are on the sky for the drone show produced by Sky Elements. Remember, we talked surprises. Minutes before this, the crowd learned there is a reason to watch this show especially closely.
Tonight, we are going to have an official Guinness World Records attempt. The attempt is going to be the largest aerial image of a cowboy hat made out of drones.
And here comes that moment.
You had a total of 519 drones in your hat? It's a new Guinness World Records title.
Fireworks cap off tonight.
What do you hope the community takes away from this?
Appreciation for everyone. Appreciation for your neighbors, appreciation for the country, what it means to be here in America.
It's cool that we have this. This is a neat thing for our community to offer, this great space to do it in. Great way to celebrate our birthday.
A night to celebrate country and community at Irving Sparks and Stripes.
Everybody's just coming together as one and just enjoying everything that's out here.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Sparks and Stripes. We head downtown to celebrate Independence Day at the city's annual Fourth of July Parade, followed by music and fun.
People really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic. So, you know, what else can you ask for?
Akuna Matata. No worries. The Irving Youth Theater returns to the art center for another showstopping performance of a Disney classic.
They have just done an amazing job, so we're super excited to share it with the community.
And in feature flicks, I review the newest installment of the Jurassic Park franchise, Jurassic World Rebirth, starring Scarlett Johansson and Jonathan Bailey.
If we get this DNA, millions of lives are saved.
Maybe we should make this quick, huh?
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Irving Spotlight. I'm Susan Stevens. We begin tonight with one of the city's favorite summer events. The annual Sparks and Stripes Parade brings families together to enjoy the sights and sounds of marching bands and floats, followed by live music, games, and much more. The sounds of beating drums and bagpipes kick off a patriotic celebration at the city's annual Sparks and Stripes Parade.
I've been here for a long time doing this parade, and it never gets old. Good morning, happy Fourth, guys. You know, people really love it and look forward to it. The community engagement is fantastic. So, you know, what else can you ask for?
We come here every year and it's really fun watching all the cars.
We're gonna have fun getting candy and spending time with the community.
It just brings us all together and then we see what Irving is and like their people.
I get to drive through and see all the diversity that we have within our community. When you really take the time, I'm driving slow enough, I can really look at the crowd, and you see that we have people from every country, every area of the world here. And they're residents of Irving, and this is their hometown. And it really gives your heart a lot of excitement because it is Independence Day and they're happy to be in America.
After all the festive floats go by, the community heads to Heritage Park for music, food, and an expanded carnival.
The rides that are out there this year are fantastic. We stepped it up a little bit. Just really trying to make that, make it something different every year for our residents to look forward to. And we have tremendous support from our mayor and city council.
That support and camaraderie is evident. Especially as Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses takes to the dunk tank to have the mayor take the first hit.
He's a good sport. But it was just fun. You know, it's all fun. It's all about engaging ourselves in the community and, you know, being able to laugh at ourselves.
And the mayor had no problem laughing at himself when participating in this.
It's fresh in everybody's mind what we just walked through. Is that right? Okay, we're back, ready to go. We're going to go to number five, which is the City Hall and Huffman renovations update. We just were all over there, so this should be fresh in our mind of what we're looking, what we saw and what we're going to do.
Thank you, Mayor. My presentation tonight is on the critical updates to the City Hall complex and the utilization of the Jack D. Huffman Building. Our City Hall space is currently at capacity, which necessitates strategic expansion and renovations to the second floor of the Jack D. Huffman Building. We've started in 2023 by creating new office space for the Parks and Recreation Department on the building. Once that was done in January, housing and redevelopment then moved into the vacated space on the first floor of City Hall that Parks and Recreation had moved out of. Following their move, we renovated their space and the Economic Development Department moved into it in February of 2025. This followed a master plan for the city complex that was completed in August of 2022. The first phase of it, which we are underway on, had the Human Resources and Communications Departments identified as the two teams which would benefit from moving to the empty space on the second floor of Jack D. Huffman Building. Komatsu Architecture and the CIP staffs, project managers, have been working with those two departments to utilize and design effective space that allow them to function. The design was completed in June of 2025, and we're currently underway working to get that out to bid. The construction's expected to be completed in early 2026, with the departmental move-in scheduled for the summer of that year. While that's underway, we're also engaging in design and redesign of the current buildings, going through schematic and design development for City Hall to appropriately use the spaces available in the basement, second floor, third floor, and fourth floor of City Hall. Currently, the Communications Department, located on the fourth floor of City Hall, has 2,100 square foot available to them. The picture that you see is the new space that'll be available to them in the Jack D. Huffman Building. They'll be gaining 2,700 square foot for more than double their space at 4,800. The Human Resources Department currently occupies 6,200 square foot on the third floor of City Hall. They'll be taking the majority space on the second floor, which will give them an additional 2,900 square foot for 9,100 square foot total. In addition to this, we're also going to be adding a break area and a conference space to the lobby outside the stairwell to better utilize that open space. By doing this, it provides us the best square footage utilization possible of the second floor of Jack D. Huffman. While that's under construction, we're designing the utilization of the City Hall space. Renovations will, major renovations be performed to the basement, second, third, and fourth floors of City Hall. Construction's scheduled to begin after Human Resources and Communications move out in 2026. We'll be renovating the former Human Resources space on the third floor and accommodating a portion of the IT department into that area. The IT department is currently located in the basement, and the majority of their personnel will be moved up to the third floor. The fourth floor space will be renovated and reconfigured once Communications has vacated. In addition to this, we'll be renovating the restrooms on all five floors of City Hall. Currently, we're looking at about 70,000 square foot of space renovated, and the cost of the renovations is going to be $26.5 million. This works out to $379 a square foot. This is a reasonable price as currently renovations generally running anywhere from $380 to $410 a square foot in the metroplex right now. The money will be coming from these bond sources. We're using seven and three-quarters of non-bond and 18.7 of BRF funding for it. In addition to what we're doing with the renovations that we've looked at, we also have a supplemental budgetary request as part of the finance process this year to do mechanical, electrical, and plumbing repairs. These have been identified as necessary, though they are not emergency. However, we can save value and time by conducting these renovations and repairs while we're doing the other renovations to the building.
Ashley, if I may again counsel, the 26 and a half million that you see there, that is all cash. We are not borrowing any dollars to do this. So these are dollars that we've been able to save up in our non-bonded and our building, our repair and replacement fund, the BRF. So again, or the BARF, depending on how you want to look at it. The three and a half million, it is a supplemental request. We have not yet identified the dollars yet to do that. So that's what we're looking at right now. We'll see how the budget plays out, and that's what we're reviewing right now as part of the same and just proposed budget. But again, we have not identified the money for that yet.
Bathroom renovations, as discussed, in all five floors will go through a modernization, removing the existing tile, plumbing, and fixtures, and bringing them up to current codes and standards. The ceiling on all five floors as well is currently outdated. It is obsoleted by the manufacturer. It is not produced. This leads to issues whenever we have damage issues or just general wear and tear on the building systems. So as part of the $26.5 million, we'll be replacing all of the lighting with new energy-efficient LED fixtures, as well as replacing the acoustical ceiling tiles with modern versions. About two-thirds of the basement is going to get renovated. The three areas we're not going to touch in this, at the top right is the existing print shop. To the northwest is our mechanical area, and at the south is the existing server room. So those will not be in the scope. The rest of the area will get updated and redesigned. The picture you see is currently part of the schematic development design. It has not been finalized yet. It's just showing possibilities for what's going to happen with the space. Second floor is a relatively simple renovation compared to the rest. Two of the conference spaces on the floor are going to be subdivided and used for additional officeing for our staff expansions. Third floor renovations, the most hefty in the building. The entire Human Resources space is going to get demolished and rebuilt as the needs of the IT department demand. On the northwest side of the building, where we have Irving University currently, that will be turned into offices for the field inspectors for code enforcement. They're very much pressed into the space they have now, and any breathing would be appreciated by the team. Fourth floor renovations take place to the middle east of the building. That is the Communications Department space. Current usage of that is still being decided during this process. And then, as you saw, on each floor, we'll be updating the bathrooms. Are there any questions?
Questions? On the ground floor or the basement floor, the area where the, now the employees' eating area, is that, that's being redone with a circular?
The current break space for the employee area, the plan, one of the plans we've been looking at is turning that into a larger conference room that teams from the building will better utilize.
And then we're going to move the break area down?
Yes, sir, to the southwest side of the building.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to figure out.
As I've said, this-
You're doing for a break area down there.
Mayor, I think the majority of the basement's going to be exactly what you're saying. It's going to be a cafeteria for our employees. So it's going to be pretty massive. It's going to be nice. We're going to have like little breakout rooms and breakout areas and stuff like that. So it's going to be more of an amenity that the employees actually need and deserve. So that's majority of that's going to be happening in the basement.
That's what I was trying to figure out. I'm assuming all that on our left from the middle over is all new for the employees' facility, correct? I was just trying to get that straight in my head. I mean, I think we should do it. I just wanted to make sure that's what we, that's where it was going.
Yes, sir. On this plan, it shows that some, a lot of details still need to be worked out during the schematic design phase. So this is, this is an option. It's not the exact plan that we're going to bring to you.
I've just, you know, I've had this conversation with Chris several times that we've got to get a decent breakout area for the employees. to get a decent breakout area for the employees that doesn't look like they're in a dungeon. And it's got some things other than four vending machines and a microwave.
It is very high on the priority list that we've given the architect.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Abdul.
Any plans for the renovation on the chambers?
Unfortunately, the first floor is excluded from this space. We're mostly focusing on employee areas as part of this renovation, so. First floor will be touched when it comes to the bathrooms and the ceiling tiles and lighting, but that's the extent that we currently have planned for the first floor. We do have additional possibilities as an add alternative should budget allow, but it's currently not in the set scope, the base scope.
At least to renovate some of the lighting, that is what I sometime get feedback from, that we have very low lighting in the chamber area. So, but I don't see it any, anything here, so that's an alternate, add alternate?
Well, no, sir. The, the lighting on all spaces is going to get addressed.
Okay, thank you.
It's, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, I think you wore us out.
Excellent.
No, it was great to go see what these areas and see how we can fix them up. And really, the ceilings and the lighting is huge. All right, we'll go then to the regular agenda. Item two is a public hearing gathering input on the 2025-26 Annual Action Plan for Federal Funds. Item number three and four and five are minutes, work session, and the regular meeting minutes. Item number six is a resolution spending the July 31st, 2025 effective date of Encore Electric Delivery Company's request rate change to permit the city time to study the request and establish reasonable rates and approval with the Steering Committee of Cities served by Encore. Item numbers, go ahead, Abdul.
On this item number six, there is a, quite a change request from the Encore to increase the, the average rate. Is that yearly or is it, how does that contract works?
Yeah, I'll answer this question. This is a rate case that has been filed with the city. The city retains original jurisdiction for these rates in the city, but the city is also a member, there's 170 cities that are part of a coalition. So in response, I just kind of give that context because it's important. This is, the rates are adopted by the council, and once the rates are put in effect, they are for a duration of time. So this is the first rate case since 2022. I would highlight there are two components to this. One is the 12.3% increase in residential rates, and you can see they provide an average of, if that is what, and generally, it is, the parties will negotiate, and we bring back a settled rate case for the council to consider and adopt. It will be less than, generally, it is less than that amount. But at the 12.3% increase in residential rates, they anticipate it would increase a bill a little under $8 per month. This rate case, I just would highlight this for you all, there is a 51% increase in street lighting rates. We are not the only city. Lots of cities are incredibly concerned about that increase. We work with an outside law firm, Lloyd Gosling, they've helped us for decades in all these cities for decades. They have engaged a very specific consultant to review the basis and the rationale for that rate piece. So we will keep you posted on developments with that. But generally, you know, just answering your question, once, they can't change the rates unless they come to us. And once the rates are in effect, they generally are in effect for a duration of a few years. This one, I mean, it's been since 2022, so the current rates have been in effect for three years. And the 12.3% increase, you know, they're estimating it will be about $8 per month, you know, for an average residential customer.
So these increases are for both, for the city as well as for the residents?
That's correct. These are, yes, these are the rates, this is the distribution piece on the electric side. Probably the biggest impact for us will be the street lighting rates. You know, just quickly chatting with Dan about this, it's about $250,000 to $300,000 per month. We have 14,000 streetlights that we pay for. So that is one, I mean, just think about that for every community. There's 455,000 streetlights in this service area, so it's not just City of Irving. And so their rationale for the rate increase is repairs and replacements. They want to phase out the high-pressure sodium lights and replace them with LED lights, which is what they use for their new build, but they're going to go back and update all the lighting. So that, that is the rationale for this. Although, I think this piece, this is very different than some of the rate cases you all have seen in more recent years. This is extraordinary, so I think there will be a lot of scrutiny on this. I know John attends these, you know, regular meetings with the coalition, so we should have some updates kind of as that goes on, and then we'll continue to kind of monitor that. I do get copied on these emails, so I will be monitoring it as well. Generally, we will get kind of an update probably in the next couple of months. Usually, these rate cases, they get filed in the late spring, early summer with a resolution typically, typically the September, October timeframe is my recollection. We'll keep you guys posted.
So my actual query is, this rate increase is for the city usage as well as for residents-
That's correct.
To pay.
That is correct.
Across all 170 cities.
Right. So we are approving, if we approve this, we are approving on behalf of the city as well as on behalf of the residents?
No, sir. What you're doing today is they, the way the process works is they file their rate request with the city. What you're doing today is you're suspending the rates. Like, you're suspending the rate increase from going into effect. And so there is a period of time, it is 90 days after the rate change goes into effect, it suspends it for that entire period of time. So that's usually the window for getting a negotiation. The way it's worded in your resolution is, it doesn't say 90 days, it says the maximum amount allowed by law, because Encore has the ability to extend that period beyond the 90 days. So if that helps, you're not putting the rates in effect. That will come back to you likely in the form of a settlement, and you will have two readings of that before the rates actually go into effect. So generally, they ask here, we negotiate them down, there is a settlement that comes back to you, and you have two readings, and you implement that.
All right, thanks.
This one's a little different just because of the street, street lighting piece.
Hal?
Okay, if I understand this correctly, what we're doing is we're just suspending it-
Correct.
-at this point to give us that 90-day period to decide what we want to do, or do we need to make a call before that period of time?
What you're doing, there's two things. You're suspending the rate, but you also, you are already, the City of Irving is a member of this 170-
Of that coalition.
-city coalition. So the second part of your resolution is you are authorizing the lawyers and the consultants to engage in negotiations, right? And they will have to bring that back to you.
Okay, and I think that, Abdul, you were right on on the question. Can we get a last, I don't know, maybe 10 years? Maybe I'm asking for too much.
I can ask.
Maybe five years?
Yep.
What's been the increase over that period of time? So we get a kind of a understanding of what we're really buying into?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
David?
But we really have no choice for Encore delivery. I mean, what's the other option?
For our streetlights, there is not one.
Right. Or what about residents? You still have to have Encore delivery, right? There's a delivery charge.
They are wheeling the electrical power, yes.
So there's no decision other than to approve whatever the lawyers negotiate?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, basically-
You have touched upon the-
The issue.
The quagmire we are in, right? They get to ask, they have to justify what their ask is, and so that, that becomes the touch point. But right, we're not in a competitive market with respect to this, this is the delivery and distribution piece of Encore.
Yeah, basically, what's happening is that we've added streetlights, and we've done those type of things. So now they're raising the rates on us and going through that. We're basically, to David's point, we have no other provider. So the reality of it is that we've got to work with them, but we have the ability to negotiate and say, you may think it's costing you this much, prove to me that your expenses are there. And that's how it's, so we're basically, we got to pay whatever their increases are. We just got to, we're just holding our feet to fire, saying, explain to us and show us and prove to us that those dollars are what are needed.
And I will mention that the cost associated with this is not borne by the city, the process. Those costs are reimbursed by the company. Obviously, they are passed on to the rate payers. But the economy of scale of 170 cities negotiating together rather than us each individually doing that, that's how this process has been set up. So you'll see it on, this is with Encore, we do it also as well with Atmos.
Okay, number seven is, Mark?
Can we have a presentation on this one?
Number seven?
Yep.
Okay, number seven is a resolution approving the first four renewals to the agreement for crossing guard services between the City of Irving and All City Management Services, Inc., in the total estimated amount of $915,151.80 for school crossing guard management services for a one-year term.
Yes, sir, this is Sam Hall, Assistant Chief Police Department. This is to renew the crossing guard agreement we have. It's actually gone down from our previous, it's gone down $53,618.10, I believe. Part of that is due to the, a few school closures, we've bred in Elliott and De Zavala. So it's reduced four positions from 66 down to 62.
The, so the city provides the crossing guards for the Irving ISD schools, is that right?
Through this vendor, yes. We used to employ as the part-time direct city employees, but now we've been using this vendor service.
Does the, does the city provide the service for Capel ISD or Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD?
I believe it's for just the Irving on, I'd have to check. I believe it's just on the Irving ones, though.
This is the one up at Capel. I think it's actually Irving, but it's at Capel.
It's at Capel School?
Yeah. That's the one up at Valley Ranch, it was on the city.
Right, there's, yeah, there's two, the other school district, too.
Okay, thank you.
Now, is this a shared cost with the resource officers or a shared cost, but the crossing guards are not?
Yes, these, it's 100% on the city.
Okay, Abdul.
Mayor, your question, is it shared or not? It's not shared, right?
No.
It's completely taken by-
City.
-the police department and the city. So you said there is 62 positions currently, right?
That, there has been, but with the school closures of the three schools, it's reduced four of those positions, or it's three schools, but four of the positions, so.
So currently, it's 62?
62. This, this will go to 62, yes.
It's almost $14,500 a year approximately, right?
$14,000, you're talking about per, per position? Yeah, the hourly rate has actually gone up $1.25 to, I believe it's almost $26.90-ish.
For some reason, I was in the impression that it is the shared cost by ISD, but it is not.
No.
Okay.
No.
Sometime let's figure that all out, have a little presentation on the school crossing and the-
Yes, sir, it actually is all three school districts, so.
It's all schools in Irving on the public side.
Yep.
So we do Capel, Carrollton Farmers Branch.
Carrollton Farmers Branch, Irving ISD, and Capel.
Al, or Mark, do you finish?
Go ahead, Mark. I'll go ahead. Yeah, so the school crossing guards could be paid for by the ISDs themselves. I mean, it's a, I like the, like, the standard practice. I mean, this is a, it's a million dollars a year, and it's, if it's something that the ISD should pay for themselves, then I think that they should. Is there, do we have any, any information on that?
Because it's city streets, it would be the city's responsibility. It's our city streets.
Yeah, yes, sir. There's a public safety element to this, you know, trying to get, make sure the kids get across the street, and we do have accidents. This past year, we did have one of the crossing guards did get hit seriously and eventually passed away. They're typically elderly folks that they, that they hire for these vendors, so, you know.
The ISDs have their police, they have police departments, too. But these are, but these are city streets, and so that's the rationale? All right, thank you.
Yes, in, in different states that I've worked in as well, it's the city's responsibility to manage the crossing guards and the safety on the streets.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a resolution ordering contract to CCGMGLC Series B for the amount of $202,000 for construction of the Criminal Justice Center security fence on the south lot. Item number nine is a resolution approving and accepting the bid by Landmark Structures One LP in the amount of $14,062,000 for the bid of the Esters Elevated Storage Tank Replacement. We had that this morning, we talked about. Item number 10 is renewing the annual contract with CCGMGLC Series B in the amount not to exceed $2 million for concrete repair of sidewalks, utility cuts, streets, and alleys. And that brings us to our zoning cases.
There we go.
There we go.
He's about to bring the slides up. There we go. The first case is a special fence plan case. The, excuse me, the P&amp;Z actually postponed it this past Monday, so therefore, the City Council cannot take action on it. We were trying to, we split our cases, which is why it's even on your agenda, we're trying to reduce the load. So it does need to be postponed to the August 28th meeting so that council, or so that P&amp;Z can take action.
Okay, that's an easy one.
The next case is 861 Hope Lane. It's a request in an R6 district to have a variance to the rear yard setback. They did an expansion. Staff finds no unnecessary hardship. P&amp;Z recommended approval eight to zero. We have one letter in support and one in opposition. So here's the property on Hope Lane. The last, I believe it's four houses are in an SP site plan, so they have some reduced setbacks, but they, or they have, I believe it's a reduced lot size, but some of the setbacks still are consistent with the R6 district. So they do have a 20-foot rear yard setback. Yeah, so it's these in here are an SP. So we do have the letter in opposition, we just got this yesterday from the property in the rear. From what we could tell, we looked at it, and he had some type of patio cover as well, but he was, he was concerned about the appearance of the one behind him. So here's the request. Again, it was supposed to be a 20-foot deep rear yard setback. They want to do a storage room and a covered patio. They have already started to build it, it's actually almost complete. But in where it is built, they would need approximately seven and a half feet of depth, so there'd be a 12 and a half foot variance. So here's the property. So this, these are some pictures that the applicant sent us. I understand they started building without knowing they needed a permit.
Kind of got it done.
Yeah. Because I think they, if I'm correct, this is the one where they came in and got some information. They may have submitted a permit, but didn't get it released. And sometimes people will apply for a permit and think all they need to do is submit and not realize that it needs to be issued. So they have done some pretty significant work. What we've noticed, and I thought had, staff had a map in here, let me go back to this other one. If you go kind of up and down the street, I don't know if these are permitted or not, but it's not inconsistent for people to have some encroachments into their rear yards. Again, I don't know if they were legal or not, but it, they, it wouldn't be completely inconsistent with what's already in the area.
Well, that's a prime example of when you do an SP for six homes and we give variances and then they get sold and no one realizes they, that they're in an area where there's six homes that have an SP that has variances in it.
So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Abdul.
Do they have a permit now?
They, well, the permit can't be issued until they get the variance approval. So they, they've submitted for the permit, it is in, in the system, but it can't be issued until they're able to encroach into the 20-foot setback.
Mark. Do we know if the other neighbors got SP approvals?
I don't believe so. I, I didn't see, in looking at that map, I didn't see any other variances into those, into the 20-foot setback.
Okay. But we can see if there's, there's, they're violating the setback rules in those other properties? Are those being looked at as well?
So, yeah, I'm gonna like, I'm gonna go to the zoning. So this is where normally if like other people would have a variance, they would have had their own little SP rectangle.
Yeah.
So I'm not seeing that any got specific variances. Could code look into those? Sure. I think what happened here is they, they tried to go in through the process and then the inspections staff went back and looked because it was a, it's been a stagnant or a pending case. And they went to see what was going on and realized it had been built.
So what, what is the process when we become aware that there's a violation like that of the setback rules for code enforcement?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Shane Delia, your code enforcement director. The, the process is pretty straightforward. In a situation like this, when this is brought to our attention, we'll attempt to communicate with the property owner, advise them of the violation that we're observing, see if in fact they do have some documentation maybe that we're missing in regards to previous permits or construction that was approved. And then if not, give them a short but reasonable timeframe to connect with the city and apply for either permits to make it legal construction, or if variances are needed, then work with planning and zoning to accomplish that through this process.
So for this case, apparently there's neighboring properties that have violations, and so would that cause you then to investigate those?
Yes, as you were all speaking, I was making some notes as to the, the streets and we're going to have a, a look at those. We'll, we'll update you as to what we find.
Shane, aren't you limited?
Yes, sir.
Based on what you can observe from a public right of way?
Yes, there's some limitation there, but we, we, by all means, we'd, we'd take a look at the properties and see if in fact we can develop a case and, and if we can reinforce it, but if not, then, then, then we wouldn't be able to pursue it.
Is Google Maps fair?
No, Google Maps is typically not something we could use. It's something that we could use to start a conversation with the property owners. But if that's, it's, that's all we ended up with in the end, we probably would not pursue a case.
Okay, thank you.
Is this one that you think we ought to sit on till the next meeting or do it, postpone it to, so that if in fact their permit, even though they have not received it, they'll have the ability to perfect it, or what's your, what's your thoughts?
So they will not, they're, the permit is pending your action. So not acting on this will, will just freeze this case, it will just stop the case. So they, they need to know if they're going to get their variance or not. And then if they do get their variance, the permit can be issued, they'll get double feed for work without permit. If they don't get the variance, then the action would probably, would be to remove it back to the 20-foot. So that they, there's, there's no, there's no benefit to delaying the decision for this one for them.
Okay. David. What did you say the P and Z vote was?
P and Z was eight and zero.
In support?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just actually two quick questions.
The overall city map?
I was just going to ask, is, do you do aerial surveillance? Like, could you, do, does the department have drone surveillance that would help?
No, no, sir, not generally. The, the Fourth Amendment protections get in our way there, and I mean that in a good way. We generally are able to, we can use what we can see from public right of way. We're, we're not permitted to use technological advances or things like drones, we can't use ladders, those sorts of things. So in that situation there, what, what's in a backyard is fairly well protected. But we often find that when we make contact with owners and discuss it, they, they kind of let us know what's going on and we advise them on the process. So we, we do uncover these even in backyards semi-regularly just through conversations with the property owners without having to develop the, the firsthand knowledge ourselves ahead of time.
I see. So, um, I'm just wondering how, if there's a way we can determine how temporary, or like whether there are temporary structures in the other adjacent properties. But it, but it also seems that one way or another, if we deny this. Yeah, but if we deny this case, am I correct in thinking that essentially we would be like punishing the homeowners trying to go through the correct processes and?
The ones that didn't got away with it.
Yeah, they got away with it, you know? I, I don't know, it seems like a sticky one to turn down, but anyhow, that's just my comment, thank you.
No good deed goes unpunished. I think this is, to me, this is one of the challenges we really have, is there's all these different categories and there's variances. And today, people are building out everything they can because they're trying to get as much space to live in and, and actually our, our lot lines that are the five-foot side yards and the 10-foot rear yards and the 20-foot front yards, at least they can't build outside of them. But I think you're going to see pretty much every lot that's got a little bit of a backyard is going to eventually be built back. It's just a matter of if we catch them before they get to the 20-foot or the 12-foot or the five-foot.
Al. Yeah.
Did I hear you say that even though, we received a letter against or an opposition, am I correct?
Yes, the lot behind.
The one that can't see now?
Which one? Oh, okay.
Yeah, the one in pink.
I see that's why they sent the letter, okay.
The one that now has it in their backyard.
Next one.
All right. Thank you. The next case is De Rosani's at 105 South Main Street. They are in the Heritage Crossing District, but they are requesting to go to RAB. We will keep the Heritage Crossing District standards within the RAB. Staff recommend approval, P and Z recommend approval seven to one, one letter in support and none in opposition. So Rosani's, of course, is downtown on our central main street, and they are just wanting to start to serve alcohol. So with this case, we, let's see, let me go back to this map. We did find, there was a question, we, we were very careful to look for churches in this area. One of the churches, sorry, I'm going to go to the aerial. There is a church over here to the east and that was beyond the 300-foot area, I believe it was about 325. But we found, we, we weren't sure if it was open or not, and so we tried to do a little bit of sleuthing to find out. And from what we can tell, there, there is a church that meets, I think they have like a monthly lease on this property. But we have to assume that there is going to be a church operating, this is the old, I believe it's old pigeon pole, if I'm correct. And so we have informed the applicant that they will need to complete that alcohol distance variance process that will go only to the city council, not P and Z, before they can get their TABC license. So that's not something that particularly has to be done before they get the RAB, they just can't get their TAB license until they get that distance variance.
John.
Is there, is there additional cost to the property owner for just the, the alcohol distance variance?
I believe it's $400.
So we got a two-step process, we got, anybody have a problem? This is a big, this is one of our biggest challenges with, with South Irving at trying to get something into them because pretty much every, just say it, pretty much everything that's going to be successful is going to sell some type of alcohol. And you have all these churches on every corner and it just gets tougher and tougher for them to do business. I mean, I, he, he needs us, I think, to really continue to stay in business.
Mark. Yeah, I mean, you have these churches in these like retail spaces, and so it's a very, it's not going to, it's not all that permanent and, yeah, you're right. If we, if we don't approve those, then we can't actually have restaurants down there with alcohol. Okay, next one.
Next one's 506 Collins. They're requesting a solid wood fence in the side yard setback, which is on a reverse frontage lot. P and Z, or staff found no unnecessary hardship, P and Z recommended approval seven to one with conditions that they have a five-yard, I'm sorry, a five-foot setback, a corner clip on the east side and that the owner trimmed the hedges. P and Z, or I'm sorry, public comments, we had none in support and one in opposition. And so the one in opposition was the property directly behind. So this is the location where they want to do the fence. And here is the opposition, you do have that letter. The concern was visibility, as you would expect. There was also some discussion about the hedges having grown a little taller than was agreed upon and therefore they had a hard time seeing out, especially with the curve on the street. So here's the proposal that was submitted for P and Z's consideration. It's in the red and then down here, it would be on the property line, there is a, it's about a two-to-three-foot retaining wall. And so they want to replace a chain link with the wood fence. And what P and Z's recommendation was, is to carry it down the five-foot. There is a 10-foot utility easement here, we checked with water and there's nothing in it, so they would need to do an encroachment agreement. But if they put the fence in that easement, it would not affect any existing water lines in the middle. The request two was to put a corner clip here on the, this is the east side, so that the neighbor could see when they're pulling out of the driveway. So this is just the property, again, chain link today, they want to put the wood fence up. And here's the retaining wall, so they would be just, they would be the five feet from the retaining wall. And this is the neighbor who submitted an opposition. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
David. Yeah, can you go back to that photo right before that? So the fence line is going to stay on that fence line right there?
Yeah, it would be, so here would be, so this is the chain link that's on the retaining wall, it would be five feet back. And then this is where there would be more of a corner clip is what was requested.
Okay, so it's not continuing on down to the next door neighbor's house?
No, no, this is, this is the neighbor's property.
Okay.
So this is a chain link, they're going to replace it all the way around, but the variance is for the street side.
Thank you. John.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, yeah, I was, I was also very concerned about the visibility and all of those issues with this. And seeing the, seeing the neighbor's letter just confirms. So, but, so now the site plan has been updated, you said? Like five feet back from the retaining wall?
So the site plan has, that we have notes on the site plan? So we, we did update with those notes with the, the actual location on, of the fence, has not been updated yet on the site plan. But the three conditions that P and Z put on it, we have put on the notes. It's not in your packet because this was P and Z on Monday.
Yeah. Okay, but, so, so the new location, it's not reflected in the drawings on the site plan, but it is reflected in the notes. The new location is five feet into the property from the retaining wall.
Correct.
How big is the corner clip?
We would work with traffic on that, I don't know, Dan, are they typically 10-foot corner clips? Whatever the standard corner clip is to make sure that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, like I said, the visibility is, is a big concern. The neighbor's already telling us, like, it's already a problem and, you know, that, that street's not as, uh, not as much of a Speedway as Shady Grove, but it, it can get pretty, pretty hairy up, right there on Fifth. Well, it's kind of where Fifth and Sixth turn into each other. Yeah, if you, if you could get the, I don't know, but I have, I have a bit of a problem with this one. You know, just because, because of that, that visibility problem.
David. Oh, it should be off, sorry. Yeah, that, it's pretty crazy how big that tree is, it's sticking out there in the middle.
Yeah, and part of what the neighbor said at P and Z was that when it was chain link, you could see through it. But even, you know, it's solid now because the vegetation hadn't been cut back. So that was part of his concern and apparently was in agreement with the old neighbor that they would trim it down and they didn't. So this is almost solid, just with the vegetation.
Yeah. All right.
This is, next case, 301 Regent, Suites 140 and 150. They're SP2CC and SP1RAB to SP1RAB. Staff recommends approval, P and Z approval eight to nothing, no opposition or support. So this is here on Beltline and it was Royal. So it's obviously a tenant space in a shopping center. And they are in the existing green space, which is SP1RAB. And they're wanting to expand into the, the yellow, into the adjacent space. They're connected, they're sharing a kitchen, so they're connected essentially through the kitchen. But they cannot expand without having the same zoning. So they are having to rezone this to RAB in order to be consistent within the, the larger restaurant. The ironic thing is, is they don't plan to sell alcohol, but the owner who has this RAB zoning wanted to keep it. So it was either all or none for both of them because they are now one expanded restaurant. So this is the, the green is the existing and they're just wanting to expand into this next door tenant space. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Al.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I went up and looked at it and so it's a, it's a going concern, so I understand what they're trying to do, so.
Questions other than that? All right.
All right. So the next case, the last cases are Delaware Crossing Phase Three. This is on Rendy Street, Sixth Street, and Hilltop. The request is to rezone to Heritage Crossing Neighborhood Mixed Use. The staff recommends approval, P and Z recommended approval seven to one, we have three letters in support and one in opposition. So y'all know well where the location is of Delaware Three on Sixth Street and Hilltop. The city owns the majority of the property. There's a, the property owner who's the developer owns two of the lots and so together, all of those will be developed into one, one development. The reason we have chosen the Heritage Crossing District is the, everything in here in color is the Heritage Crossing District itself. I thought I had another map in here. The red is the transit mixed use because it is adjacent to the TRE station. The pink or purple is the commercial mixed use. And then the, the brown or the orange is the neighborhood mixed use, which is intended to be a much more neighborhood heavy with some small offices, but to maintain that residential character of the area. So the intention here is to extend the neighborhood mixed use, the residential, excuse me, the residential uses out of the Heritage Crossing District and the, the entire area is the Heritage District. And so bringing the Heritage Crossing zoning into it is consistent with the future development of the area. So this would be colored brown, just like this is. Again, here's the location of the property on Delaware Creek. And one property owner across the street. We had someone speak, I think he was number three, or number one, he spoke at P and Z. I don't think he submitted anything in writing. He, he was just concerned about losing the trees behind him and had some questions for the developer, Dr. Horton, as to how this was going to affect him, what was going to be behind him, the fencing, and that type of thing. So here again is a picture of a Heritage Crossing District, as a reminder, for those. As a reminder, for those of you who are not aware, it was approved in November 2017. It is a form-based code, which the intention is to be a walkable pedestrian area where the buildings are up to the street, where you have a mix of uses. And we encourage some density here in order to provide that energy for the restaurants and the retail and for the redevelopment of the area. It's also, again, it's a form-based code, so we, it allows some consistency for the area. And then again, we do have the character districts, which are, have unique intents in terms of the redevelopment intent of patterns. Again, this is neighborhood mixed use. This is the development agreement illustrative exhibit. It is intended to be zero lot line homes, so these would be platted for sale homes. They will have a 10-foot separation in between, which over the last few years, this is, y'all have seen this several times, and that was one thing that council did ask for is to make sure that we had that spacing of 10-foot in between each building. Also, that was something that fire wanted as well. Each of these will be fronting a green, they call it a muse, but a green space, and they will all have two garage, two parking spaces in the garage. The garages will be required to be the 20 by 20, 400 feet. This, of course, is along the creek and so they will be, I believe it's either putting the first trail in or rebuilding the trail, and so they will be contributing to the trail system along Delaware Creek. The larger street here is a public street. These others are essentially private streets, private driveways, will be full fire lanes with no parking. That again was another part of the agreement with the developer. So here's just some pictures of the property. Sixth Street, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. Amel does here as well. This is actually her baby. So if you have any detailed questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to come up and answer those.
Mark.
It's great to see the project. Obviously Delaware Creek has been successful. All those have sold out and the zero lot lines is a popular product. Parking, you know, has been a concern with Delaware Creek and could you address that? And then another issue too is that you have the walking trail there and so, and the green belt there, but I don't see any playgrounds or park space for, in this area. And so I think that's something that needs to be provided as well.
I'll let her hear the details.
So this site plan here reflects again the site plan that was in the approved development agreement, so that did not include park space, but included the rebuilding of the trail from Sixth Street down to Rindi in order to connect the trails along the western side of Delaware Creek, down to the trail here to get to Center Park. In some of the earlier phases of negotiations, there were ideas of a, of a public park, but we did not want to pursue that because that would have been an additional cost on the city to have to maintain a new park system, but we did work with them to be able to do the trail. And so we will be responsible for just maintaining the pavement of this trail. So, and then in regards to the parking, there are the two parking spaces in the garages and then throughout the development, we'll have an additional 60 designated visitor parking spot, spaces to help address visitor parking.
Can you, can you identify those spaces?
Sure. So there are some right here that are head-in parking. There are, these are on-street parking. We could have the on-street because we made this wide enough for a public road. And then all the parking off of the muse alley streets are all head-in in order to not be on-street here. So they are placed throughout the development to have access for, for parking throughout.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think, I think it's unfortunate that there's not parks. I mean, I think that we're putting a lot, that's a lot of houses and, and, so we have the development agreement and it's not provided for, so I understand that and, but yeah, thanks for answering my questions.
Other questions? Okay.
That should be our last case. Oh, I'm sorry.
How many units are there?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Mm-hmm. And there's a total of how many spaces? Two hundred and twelve spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 17 is confirming the appointment of, by the city manager to a commission to serve on the firefighters and police officers civil service commission for a term expiring July 10th, 2028. Chris, you've got somebody there? That takes us to the mayor's report. I've got, I'll get the committee rosters out to everybody. C C's got them put together for me. I went over everything with her this morning. Boards and commissions. Al and, and David and myself are going to work on that. I want to really look at these boards and commissions and see the ones that we're really using and the ones that we're just placeholders, because it's getting to be a challenging, I mean, I don't know how to say this without sounding like I'm picking sides, but I've gotten several calls from different committees where they feel like there's, people are being placed on because of their beliefs on one side and it's one person's being put on because they don't want to have more people that agree with them on this one. And I really want to get it so we're not dividing residents. There's got to be a way where we can put people on these boards and commissions and they don't feel like there's, there's one group working against another group. But I think if we go through it, we can figure it out. I'm not, not too worried about it. I think we can reach an agreement, so I think between the three of us, we'll really evaluate the boards, commissions, and then we'll see where we go with the, with the new applications and get them lined up for everybody. All right, that takes us to the future in focus. We have three of those. We can knock out a couple before. Which ones do you prefer, Chris, that'll get us, that we can get to in a relatively easy fashion?
If we can focus first on fire, then we'll go I T and then comms. And we'll go as far, Mayor, is there a certain break time that you wanted to go to?
Well, probably if we could break like 6:15, so we got at least 45 minutes to eat.
Very good. We'll focus on fire, then I T, then communications.
Awesome.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager and Staff. My privilege today to bring you an updated presentation of our future in focus. If you have any questions along the way, please pick up. First of all, I want to remind each and every one of you, we're more of an all hazards mitigation department. There's many disciplines within the fire department outside of just being fire. And so I'm going to go through and share some of those different branches within the fire department with you today. These are some of the pictures for this past year, ice storm and some of the training that we go through and various responses. First of all, our department overview, our mission's real simple, is to reduce or mitigate hazards to life and property and to serve the public in their needs. Our key services are broken down into four parts. Fire suppression, emergency medical services, fire prevention and administration. Within our fire suppression division, we've got emergency mitigation, fire suppression, hazardous material responses, technical rescue team, our swift water rescue team. Specialty programs include honor guard and bike medics, tactical medics that assist P D in their SWAT program, Task Force Two deployments. Of course, our paramedic program is on our fire apparatus and our ambulances. Fire prevention, we have life safety inspections, arson investigation and public education. And within administration, we have our clerical staff support, training, secondary public safety answering point, our dispatch center, some of you know it, our quartermaster, community risk reduction, recruitment team and public information officer. Altogether, we have 425 personnel in the fire department, of which 412 are sworn. This is our basic structure. Here's some pictures of our fire prevention and public interactions. We've got about half of our fire prevention on the left. In the middle is our, some of our suppression personnel out mixing with the public for public education. In the far right, we do a lot of show and tells. So, performance information within the fire prevention. Inspections this year, we've done well over 13,000 inspections. About 2,700 of those have been re-inspections. Arson, we have a total of seven working cases. Our closure rate for 2324 was right at 30%. Current fiscal year, we're running a closure rate of about 40%. Arson cases are extremely difficult to convict. You pretty much have to have an eyewitness, a video. They're extremely hard. But I will say this, our fire prevention division does a very exceptional job investigating, so much so that the district attorney has asked us to teach other cities on how to put these cases together. We also patrol private streets that have fire lanes within them. So 2324, we spent 447 hours patrolling these streets. And current year, we're about 267 hours. So inspections on the chart, you can see the five-year chart here and 2324 is the latest one. We had several personnel leave our department in fire, in fire prevention. We were down quite a few folks. I had them focus on the high hazards. So the red bar on the left that you're looking at here is high hazards. We do those every year. The one in the middle is our moderate hazards. We do them once every two years. And the far right, the black one, we do once every three years. So we've got them broken down in those categories. Specialty teams. We have a hazmat team, swift water rescue team, technical rescue team. And here's some pictures of some of the things that they've been doing. So, call-out information. As of April of this year, in the previous 12 months before that, we had eight deployments of our technical rescue team. The task force team and state mutual aid deployments were suspended, for those of you that don't know, back in 2023. We actually had a fire captain that was injured. The state was paying him about 48% of his salary. I shut down the program. Dallas, Fort Worth and Metroplex joined me and eventually the Texas Fire Chiefs across the state of Texas shut down the program. We made NIM kid. He actually came here to Irving to work out a deal in order to get those deployments back up. Once we worked through that, we got the verbiage updated in, in the contracts. We reinstituted the program and this passed legislation, they passed House Bill 4464 to codify that language and, and put it in statute. So I'm very proud of the coordination that we went through to get that done. It was very difficult because the first step, when I pulled out, it was an oh well. And then when I got my peers to do the same thing in Dallas and Fort Worth, it was oh crap. And then when the state pulled out, it was okay, let's meet. And so we got it done and that's what I'm proud of. Our swift water rescue team has been deployed four times over the past year. Technical rescue team has been deployed over 176 times. That includes regionally, throughout the state and within the city of Irving. And our hazardous material team, 58 times. So we implemented a recruitment team and they've done an excellent job. Our numbers were getting down below 200. Chris supported this program. We implemented it and our last test, we, we had right at 900 showed up at our, at our last test. I'll give you some of those numbers here in a minute. I want to talk about performance measures for dispatch, recruiting and our training. So our dispatch center is a secondary dispatch, for those of you that don't know that. Primary is within the police department. Anything fire or EMS related, they transfer over to our dispatch center. And then we take the call, get the information and get the equipment out on scene. Total dispatch calls was right at 47,000. We had 911 calls, we're right at 20,000. Incident numbers, 26,000 and apparatus responses, over 52,000. The difference there, we have some single apparatus responses and that, as some of you know, or probably all of you, when we have a structured fire, we have multiple apparatus. So that's the difference. That's why the number's reduced to 26,000 incident numbers, but our individual apparatus is over 52,000. Our recruitment team, they've hit 46 job fairs and they've actually had face-to-face contact with over 3,100 individuals. Social media is well over half a million and social media is hitting 633,000 views. The results of that is last September, like I said, they increased the attendees by 51% from 600 to 900 showed up for the test. And their goal is to maintain that 900. I can tell you right now, we got well over 2,000 actually signed up for the test and we give it every September. Training hours, we spent a lot of training on EMS and fire, as you can see. Total hours, well over 12,600 hours just in EMS training. A lot of this is required CE training by the state and the federal government to maintain our paramedic and E M T certifications. And then fire, we do well over 116,000. Not all that's required by the state, but a lot of it is and the rest of it's training our new recruits to meet our expectations. Fire suppression, some of the activities this past year. Performance chart, so if you see the line on the bottom, this is our average, this is our median, 50% of the time. We're hitting our target, which is at five minutes and 20 seconds. That five minutes and 20 seconds is comprised of four-minute response, a minute and 20 seconds to put our bunker gear and get on the apparatus and get out of the station. That might be from a dead sleep at 2:00 in the morning, it doesn't matter. That's where we measure it from. And we measure each individual discipline as we go through that, and that's an NFPA requirement. So when P D receives a call, we measure that. When it's transferred to our secondary dispatch, we measure that. When it goes to the station, when we dispatch equipment, we measure that. From the time they pull out of the station until they pull up in front of your house, we measure that. So we track every one of those in our measurements. 50% of the time, we're hitting that, as you can see, at five minutes and 19 seconds. The federal government or NFPA wants us to hit it 90% of the time. That's the top line. Now, we went through and did some international studies on where our stations are located and what it would take in order to hit that target. And we basically would need twice the amount of stations in this city in order to hit that target. But we're hitting it 50% of the time and we're proud of that. Here's another indicator, we always track property saved. We don't track property lost. Property saved is based upon D C A D and the value of the property. If we not had shown up, the whole apartment building would have burnt down or the whole warehouse would have been lost. And so we track the value of that property, not on the contents, but on the exterior value of the property. Current year to date, we're sitting at about 37 million and this was as of April mid-year. And you can see the previous years, you can see in 2223, it always grabs people's attention. We had several warehouse fires that year that we extinguished the fire and saved the EMS, our bike medic picture on the right, we've got a pretty good bike medic program. So like July the 4th, these paramedics were patrolling through the crowds if they were needed and they were able to respond really quick. And that's new Medicaid that you guys put in service this year. So our performance chart for EMS responses, once again, the bottom line is our average, our median, 50% of the time. The top line is what NFPA would like for us to do 90% of the time. We're hitting the target at 501. Response time is five minutes and that's made up four minutes once again to respond, one minute to get out the door. Cardiac arrests, we measure these. Been running right around 26 to 27. Current year, mid-year, we're sitting at 20%, but we're still hitting about three, three times the national average on our cardiac return to spontaneous circulation. That's a ROSC score that we measure, so we track that. Our target's to hit 30%. Specialty programs, on the left is some of our tac medics that respond with I P D SWAT team. On our right is our honor guard. And some of you are familiar with some of the things that they can do. So, give you a little update. Future in focus accomplishments to this point. So back in '24, Central Fire Station, we added the three captains and the three drivers to the personnel that were needed to open that station. The 12 firefighters that are assigned to that station, we were able to get a safer grant. That's a federal grant to supplement the city. It pays their salary, benefits for three years. So that saved the city roughly $4.2 million over that three years. As of mid-year in '26, that grant will be fully utilized. So city manager has rolled that into the payroll and benefits of the city as we move forward, so it won't be such a huge impact. And he's been able to do that prior to that. So we were able to purchase fire apparatus straight out of cash funds rather than having to finance it on three or five-year notes, so. In '25, current year, we added six drivers and three firefighters. This was to put Medicaid in service. We received the new ambulance, Medicaid, just back in May, so that program is fully implemented. We were using We were using a backup ambulance starting this fiscal year, but as of May, they are on the brand-new ambulance in service in Medic 8's district, which is up around Lake Carolyn Entertainment Museum. It's taken us roughly a year and a half to two years to get some of these ambulances in service. Further updates, Station 8, some of you are aware, but it's at the old bus stop for Dart up at Northwest Highway in Riverside. The completion date's still projected to be March of 2026. They're going vertical at this time. They finished pouring most of the concrete. It's about 55 yards of concrete poured out there at that location. That station will house a truck, an engine, and the ambulance, so it'll be a three-company house. In addition, it's our high-rise station, so they go out and collaborate with all the high-rises, learn the systems, what's going on the floors. They had, I think they've had two to three exercises over the past 18 months where the building management has allowed us to come in there and do drills and get familiar with the building and train. Also, it's our hazardous material response team, which is deployable throughout the region in Dallas County. We have an off-road ambulance there that we can respond on the trail or through crowds when we have parades and such. Blocker 8's there. Fire Boat 8 will be out behind the station on the water. Currently, the Fire Boat 8 that we have, we're using a Dart facility on Lake Carolyn. Update on Fire Station 9, we're working with DFW and their team to try to get, secure a piece of property to rebuild Station 9 from the unfortunate accident. I think we're getting pretty close. I've talked to Chief White out there yesterday or day before. He's taking it up to his boss at the top management level, formally trying to figure out the process of what we need to go through. And I'll bring those updates to the city managers as they come available, but I'm hoping over the next 60 days, we can get that thing locked up and settled in. But we'll see how it moves forward. '26, once again, we need a lot of help in our administrative staff. Our department has increased in size by over 35%, and our support staff has not grown. And I've gone out and benchmarked with cities the same size as us. That's Lubbock, Laredo, Plano, Arlington. And on average, we're sitting about 22 people less than what they utilize to run their department from support staff. City manager's going to help me work on this support staff this year. We're asking for eight personnel. We'll see how it works out in the budget, what we actually get. We'll be asking for two administrative chief officers, two lieutenants, two firefighters for our training, a clerical staff, and a property tech going to quarter master program. '27, our goal is to continue to strive for four firefighter staffing. This was actually put in place years ago. This has nothing to do with collective bargaining. We were pursuing this years ago. This was part of our five-year future and focus, and now it's down to three. And so we're pursuing that future and focus because of NFPA standards, best practices, and a safer working environment. It follows national studies. There's plenty of statistics that supports four firefighter staffing. So the second year of the future and focus, we'll be requesting 14 firefighters, and that is to bring all of our ladder trucks up to four firefighter staffing. Currently, we have five ladder trucks. Two of them have four firefighter staffing. This will bring the other three into compliance with that. The third year is yet to be determined based upon collective bargaining. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to the chief?
I made it quick and painless as I possibly could, sorry.
And we appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Chris?
Thank you, chief. Mayor, let's do IT, and then April's okay, we'll push communications, and then we'll wrap with IT.
On the seven arson residential versus commercial arson cases? It can be anywhere from vehicle fires, domestic disturbances, houses. I can get that.
Okay, yeah, I'm just a bit curious if there's mainly residential versus commercial.
Not many commercials.
I don't think so. Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening. Chad Powell, your chief technology officer. I'm here to present the Information Technology Department's future and focus. IT department, we deliver reliable and innovative technology solutions. We manage the city's systems, networks, and cybersecurity. Essentially, our goal as a support department is to provide all of the technology, software, and solutions that empower all the other departments to be able to deliver exceptional services to the residents, visitors, and businesses. Some of our key services we provide, obviously, the cybersecurity is something that's never going to go away, and we're at the forefront of making sure that our systems are secure and available. We have a customer service team that supports all of the devices and equipment that the staff use. We have the infrastructure team that ensures all of the connectivity and the backend infrastructure is up and running. We now have a project management team that supports all of the customer-requested projects. And then we have two software services teams. Those are divided into our enterprise software services that deliver the software that everyone in the city use or general government departments. And then we have a dedicated public safety software services team that supports the software used by fire, police, and the municipal court. And then last, we have the communications team, which provides primarily the support for our radio system as well as vehicle outfitting. That's all the technology that goes into those vehicles, as well as a number of other systems. We have a total authorized staff of 40 full-time equivalents, and then we do have a part-time intern. Here's a look at our organizational chart. I have three direct reports, a senior budget specialist, and then two assistant directors or deputy CTOs, and then the department, the rest of the department's divided equally amongst our deputy CTOs. So one deputy CTO has the two software teams, as well as our project management team, and then the other has our customer service infrastructure and our wireless and communications team. Taking a look at some of the statistics, we, on average, run about 8,650 support requests. Those are help desk tickets or calls into our support center for help and assistance. We have a total of 51 connected facilities throughout the city, and those are either connected via our city-owned fiber or leased circuits from the telecommunications providers. We have almost 2,200 email-enabled user accounts, 2,500 user devices. Those are laptops and desktops. We have about all over 1,400 infrastructure devices. Those are switches and routers and wireless access points. And then currently, we have 36 miles of city-owned fiber. We're currently undergoing a bond project from the 2021 bond. We'll be more than doubling our footprint, and that's expected to be completed in 2028. We have 270 networked fleet vehicles. Those are vehicles that have computers and routers in them that allow them access back to our network. And we are, in terms of our on-premise data, we have 939 terabytes of data, so we're just under that one petabyte range. But if you do take into account our cloud services that we don't directly support, such as the storage for email and then the Axon, NCAR Video, and BodyWorn Camera, we're all over a petabyte. Some of our key performance measures, obviously being customer service-focused, our satisfaction rating is very important. Each time a ticket is resolved or completed, the employee will receive a link to a survey, and our goal is that 95% of all of those survey responses result in a good or better rating. For this current fiscal year, we are sitting at 98%. And then the chart below is just to give you an idea of the workload in terms of service requests completed. Over the last five years, counting this mid-year, we're averaging 7,500. But to get that 8,600 calculation, I did the last three full fiscal years. Next is, the next few measures are our system availability. So network system availability, that's our routers and switches and the things that make all those 51 connected facilities continue to operate. And our goal is to be at 99% available, and we achieve that every single year. This year, we're sitting at 99.2. And then we also measure the availability of our key software systems, our most important ones. We look at 25 of them, and for the last year and a half, we've been at 100% availability. And then last but not least, our radio system availability. Our goal here is to be always 100% available, and we have a very resilient and reliable radio system with our current Motorola, and we are at 100%. That gets rounded up. We do have about 45 seconds of planned maintenance that we do on a quarterly basis, but that's so miniscule, it just rounds up to 100%. Taking a look at our accomplishments, we've established a cybersecurity governance committee. That committee is comprised of our executive leadership team, as well as directors and subject matter experts throughout the city that has an influence or an input into cybersecurity. The goal here with this committee is not only to provide organizational accountability with respect to our cybersecurity posture and direction, but it's also to ensure that, as a whole, we're taking the right approach and making decisions that benefit the entire organization. This year, in October, we did onboard a IT business analyst to join that project management team. This position provides proactive outreach to the departments. It really frontloads our project request process that we do every year during the budget season, and we've had great success with this. So the idea here is we, the business analyst routinely meets with departments to understand what challenges they're facing with technology, to gather the needs, and then also to provide them and find solutions. And sometimes, maybe even many times, we're able to help a department understand that we already have a solution that another department's using that they can utilize instead of going out and buying an entire, brand-new solution. Also, you saw all the, or many of the copiers in the basement during your tour today. We were very, we're about 50 to 60% complete, replacing all of the Xerox printers and copiers with our Canon provider. And I wanted to point out that that resulted in a $348,000 cost savings per year for the next five years. And then I've also listed here a number of the customer-requested projects that we've completed. I won't go through them all for time, but just understand that each one of those bullet points, on average, takes from procurement to closing out a project, the lifecycle is about a year and a half to two years. So they are significant projects. In terms of our departmental outlook over the next three years, we obviously want to continue our strategic plan initiatives. We're always looking for ways to provide cost savings, and I believe during our last community services meeting, with respect to our discussion on broadband needs, we mentioned public-private partnerships. So we'll continue to take a look at opportunities to provide those public-private partnerships. We want to implement a charge-back model for our radio support for our neighboring cities. And then we also have a need to address a better inventory management within IT, not only for the customer equipment, such as laptops and phones, but also at our radio shop with making sure that we have the proper inventory and replacement cycle for our portable radios. And as always, we want to take a look at cost-saving opportunities. So a good example being the lease model that we use for our copiers and printers. We want to take a look at, seeing if that will work for our desktops and laptops that we deployed, that we currently purchase. Then we want to see if we can identify some cost savings there. And then also with our new contract for printing, we have access to improved data analytics in terms of seeing how much printing is being done and by whom. And we have our eye on helping to reduce the amount of printing that the city's doing, which will save us money and also help the environment. For this coming fiscal year, we are requesting an additional communications technician. That position does vehicle make-ready and outfitting the technology in the vehicles. We partnered with the Innovation and Performance Office this year to take a look at measuring the amount of vehicles and how long it takes to outfit those vehicles. So what we found is that we currently are at a pace of being able to outfit 6.8 patrol vehicles. Specifically, we looked at patrols since we had so many in the queue. And what we found is that if we were to add an additional communications technician, we can get that output to eight vehicles per month. And then a couple of work sessions ago, I presented on the recommendation to move from Motorola to EF Johnson for our land-mobile radio system. Since I gave that presentation recently, I won't go too deep into it, but I just want to point out that with the Motorola that we've seen rising costs, and to renew a contract with them would be substantially more than taking a look at switching to EF Johnson. But not only in terms of cost reduction, we currently operate four Motorola broadcast sites, and as the urban area has developed over the years with additional high rises, we've seen a decrease in the ability to get good radio coverage and penetration into buildings in the urban areas. Doubling the EF, doubling the amount of broadcast sites here in Irving within EF Johnson Solutions is going to go a long way to making sure that we have good in-building coverage, which is very important for our police and fire, because it can become a life-safety issue if the radios are not working. The transition does, it requires a shift in how we support the radio system. So with Motorola today, it's almost completely turnkey support. They do all the heavy lifting, and we'd be switching to a self-support model in which we do most of the heavy lifting, and we have access to EFJ resources if we need it. That change does require additional personnel, so we are requesting nine additional personnel and then a reclass of that manager position for the additional reports, as well as that position would then be doing outreach to neighboring cities to see if we can get some, get other cities on a charge-back model where we can help support them and recover some of our costs. And then the big picture of things over a 10-year period, the conservative estimate is that we'd be saving $12.7 million over that period, switching. We will be in year two, so this year, we purchased 80 mobile data computers. Those are the NCAR computers for our police department. Year two will consist of the last batch of 80, totaling 160 overall. And '26, '27, we'll be requesting an additional support specialist. The key takeaway here is that as we continue to add staff in other departments throughout the city, it's necessary for us to be able to increase our support staff to be able to support the growing numbers. And we also want to use that position to support that inventory control and replacement process improvement that we'll be working on. We purchased, we had a bond project in 20, I believe, 2018 or 2019 using bond funds. We replaced all of the routers and switches in the city that were long overdue and needing to be replaced. And so the average lifespan of that equipment is about 10 years, so that's coming up in 2028. And in lieu of not having a large capital and funding source, we're going to be splitting up the load of replacing it. So we'll start proactively by doing the first of a three-year refresh of those routers and switches at $500,000 for that year. And then I did note here, I already spoke to it, but we want to explore a transition of switching from the city-owned computers to leased computers in the hopes of providing cost savings, as well as perhaps improving our ability to quickly replace computers. And '27, '28, again, we'll be asking for another support specialist. This one, we want to focus on having a backup for all of the growing audiovisual needs that we have. Currently, we have Fernando, who you are all familiar with, that run these meetings, but there's more to- But there's more to it than just running these meetings. There's maintenance. And we just went through last year and replaced all of the audiovisual equipment within all of our branch libraries. That's just an example. There's many more. So as that AV continues to grow in footprint, we need to be able to support it with additional staff. Our project load, we currently run about twenty-five of those one-and-a-half to two-year projects at any one given time, and we only have one person, our project manager, that is facilitating and running all of those projects. So we identified a need for a project specialist to offset some of that growing load on the high number of projects that we have. And then similar to the AV, similar to projects growing, we have a team of five people that support half, that support roughly forty to fifty different enterprise-level softwares. We see a need to add an additional software service analyst to support a growing number of softwares that we add each year. And then in twenty-seven, twenty-eight would be year two of that network refresh. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We'll call it a day, grab a quick bite, and see everybody at seven.